Get started in a minute. Okay, well, welcome to the regular board meeting of San Mateo County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, April 25th, 2017. Would you now all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Canepa.
Here.
President Horstley.
Here. Now time for public comment.
Public comment is reserved for persons wishing to address the board on any county-related matters that are not otherwise on the meeting agenda or listed on consent agenda. Speakers are customary limited to two minutes, but an extension can be provided to you at the discretion of the board president. Mr. President, we currently have one speaker, Mr. Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Horstley, members of the board, my fellow veterans, Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Maltby, and County Council, Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. Please direct County Council to work with the Health Systems Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Division to analyze how state mental health laws are being applied and recommend rules and regulations that allow the county to provide more humane treatment to persons living with mental illness who lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily. The Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Director said the Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association reported their agencies detained about 3,300 persons for mental health evaluations in each year for the last two calendar years, 2015, 2016, during the quarterly crisis collaboration meeting in Redwood Shores last week. He noted it meant our local law enforcement agencies are encountering an average of about 10 troubled individuals a day. He did not disclose the number of persons detained for evaluation by those mental health professionals authorized to do so, or the number of persons detained for evaluation whose behavior resulted from the psychotic effects of drugs. We count those things we consider important. To better understand how to provide more humane treatment to persons living with mental illness who lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily, please direct County Council to work with the Health Systems Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Division to analyze how state mental health laws are being applied and recommend rules and regulations that do so more humanely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? It's now time to set the agenda to approve the consent agenda, but we do want to do one thing is to remove item number 20 from the agenda. So is there a motion to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now go on to presentations. The first is a poetry reading by Lisa Rosenberg, the San Mateo County's poet laureate. Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. Lisa Rosenberg, San Mateo County's poet laureate, is here today with her son, I believe. Huh? Daughter, sorry. I'll take off my glasses. Oh, yeah, okay. And we're fortunate that she's going to do a reading this morning. And the item following this is a proclamation designating National Poetry Month for April. So Lisa, do you want to come to the podium?
Thank you Supervisor Slocum, Supervisor Groom, for creating this post and to the entire board. Thank you all for coming today. I know you're not all here to celebrate National Poetry Month, but I'm glad you're here. And given that this is National Poetry Month, I'm going to break an unwritten rule, which is that in the writing world, poems about poetry are generally best avoided. That's kind of an unstated rule. Yet I thought, given that it's National Poetry Month, I would break that rule. I only have one poem explicitly about poetry, and I thought it was appropriate to share today because it really, it's about that experience we can have as readers of poetry when we are reading something and a really amazing act of transport happens. We make a connection with some part of our own experience, maybe from our deep past, maybe from our ancestral past, some kind of emotional or body knowledge, or some amazing idea, or something we haven't thought of since we were very young children. So this poem is an attempt to acknowledge that type of transport or connection, and also an attempt to formally and publicly say to that poet, whether, in this case, the poem that occasioned it was a living poet, but it might be a poet who lived centuries ago, or who lives across the world and will never have the occasion to meet. So it's a formal acknowledgement of that. And in the process, I discovered a metaphor for the tools and the resources of poem making. As a footnote, the word poem and poet come from the Greek for maker or creator. So a poet is a maker, and a poem is a making or a creation. "To the Makers." I want to tell them, all of them, the living and the dead, not about gratitude. I want them to know, to tell them that it happens years or ages after their labors. It happens with their work in my hand, on a bowed page, at or near the end of a phrase. A fissure opens onto the deep lake of their making, its slate skin and forested rim, tools strewn on the silty bottom, wavering shapes, soft with life along grooves and shanks. Through this water, through murk and sun shaft and clear shoals, the pressure building or falling off, they dove and rose time and again, hauling, gleaning, and leaving the lake to make a portal from words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, thank you for sharing that with us all. And you might as well just continue to stand up because we're going to do a proclamation now designating April 2017 as National Poetry Month, and I would make a motion that we adopt this proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So as I mentioned, April is National Poetry Month, and I just wanted to share a couple quick little trivia with you about poetry. And I know we have a lot of agenda items here under presentations and awards, so I'm going to be pretty quick. But poetry is obviously very ancient, and one of the oldest poems written is the epic of, I'm not going to murder this, but Gilgamesh originating from Babylon some 4,000 years ago. The longest poem ever written is the, I don't know, what is this word right here?
Mahabharata.
Mahabharata. Was that close? An ancient Indian epic poem of some 1.8 million words. How about that? And of course, we all know that haiku is one of the shortest forms of poetry. So a couple of interesting little tidbits. But Lisa, I'm going to present you with this National Poetry Month proclamation, and if you want your daughter to join us, that would be fine. Or maybe not.
She's at that age, doesn't want to be.
How's that air?
Beautiful.
Okay.
Being an official document, this has several paragraphs to begin, whereas, but one is striking my eye in particular. And it says, "Poetry enhances and enrichens our lives, fosters critical thinking, discipline, creativity, self-expression, and problem-solving skills. Has inspired other artists in the fields of music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts." That middle part, "fosters critical thinking, discipline, and problem-solving skills," I will say personally, has really been central to my professional life, both in engineering and science and in poetry. And it's probably the greatest missing link that goes unstated when we look at education, when we look at things like STEM, and then someone says, "Whoop, put the A in there," and we turn it to STEAM, but it's not necessarily integrated. You know, an addition is not the same as an integration. So this goes one, I would say, very significant step toward that integration and bringing things together for the benefit of all of us.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa. And the next is a presentation is a resolution honoring Kaiser Permanente Redwood City for half a million dollar grant to the San Mateo Medical Center. And again, Supervisor Warren Slocum.
Thank you, Mr. President.
President Horstley, if we can just get a motion on the last proclamation first. We did have a motion.
We did have a motion.
It was Supervisor Slocum, and seconded by Supervisor Pine.
Thank you. And we voted.
Yes.
Okay. So next we have a resolution honoring Kaiser Permanente of Redwood City for the generous gift of $500,000 to the San Mateo Medical Center, and I would make a motion that we approve this resolution.
And again, is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Kaiser Permanente is Northern California's preventing heart attacks and strokes every day phase program combines medication and lifestyle changes to combat heart attack and strokes. And Kaiser is bringing this successful program to the community outside of Kaiser by providing nearly $6 million in grants across Northern California to reduce heart attacks and strokes, among those most at risk, including, as I mentioned earlier, a $500,000 grant to the San Mateo Medical Center. The $500,000 grant will help San Mateo's Medical Center to expand the FACE program to additional patients. FACE's evidence-based treatment has successfully reduced heart disease deaths, listen to this, has reduced heart disease deaths by 60% among Kaiser Permanente Northern California members since 2002. Between 1999 and 2014, heart attack rates among Kaiser Permanente Northern California members dropped by some 40%, and the rate of the most deadly heart attacks dropped by an amazing 72%. So we should all join in thanking Kaiser Permanente for their work in Northern California, as well as right here in San Mateo County. I think here to accept this resolution, and maybe some pictures, are Dr. Mike Wren, Chief of Cardiology in Redwood City, Dr. William Furch, Physician in Chief in Redwood City, Sheila Gibson, Senior Vice President and Area Manager, and of course, Stacy Wagner, Public Affairs Director, and last but not least, Matt Jacobs, Community and Governmental Relations Manager, Public Affairs. So if you all want to come to the podium, we'll take some pictures and give you this resolution.
Good morning, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Cardiovascular disease is the number one cause of death in the United States and accounts for 1 in 3 deaths. It is also a major cause of morbidity and disability in the United States. The FACE program, Preventing Heart Attacks and Strokes Every Day, is a successful, comprehensive program that combines lifestyle modifications and a simple medical regimen to reduce cardiovascular disease burden. And I think the important word here is every day. And cardiovascular condition, like many conditions, is something that we could prevent by focusing on our health every day. And we are excited about this grant and are confident that this grant will result in improved, not only cardiovascular health, but overall health of our county citizens. Thank you.
So our next presentation is a proclamation designating May 2017 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Supervisor Dave Pine.
Thank you, President Horstley. So each year we do mark Mental Health Awareness Month, and we do that to raise awareness of mental health and to try to do our part to reduce stigma that is so prevalent in the community when people struggle with mental health. We also recognize the courage of individuals who work to, and live with, mental health issues, and to thank our service providers who do such an incredible job, both our county staff and our nonprofit agencies. And I think this year it's particularly important to mark Mental Health Awareness Month when we see the Affordable Care Act under threat, which was really a remarkable tool to provide mental health services to people who had not had access to them in the past. So we have a number of individuals who will join us today to accept the award and perhaps share some remarks. Steve Kaplan, Carmen Lee, Christopher Jump, Lori Mills, and Pam Ward. Or maybe it's Louise Rogers. Okay. So let me present you with this plaque, if I may.
We're going to make a motion to, on that proclamation?
President Horstley, I would make a motion to accept the proclamation designating May 2017 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Second.
Say, all favor?
Aye.
I bet Supervisor Pine can say aye from the floor.
Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Sacco, Mr. Maltby, and Mr. Byers. I'm Louise Rogers, Chief of the Health System, standing in for Steve Kaplan, who unfortunately couldn't be here. We just want to thank you each for this board and county leadership support of people who struggle with mental illness and their family members and other loved ones over the years. It's the leadership of boards like this one that has essentially contributed to a movement now across the state that we call Each Mind Matters. And that's what's signified by this green ribbon.
Thank you.
So as Supervisor Pine mentioned, this is a month when we really like to hone in and honor the stories of individuals, because we know that the stigma of mental illness is one of the greatest barriers to people seeking the care that they need, which can be very effective and life-changing. So today, I'm very pleased to introduce Lori Mills, Pam Ward, Christopher Jump, and Carmen Lee. Thank you.
Good morning, all. I just want to thank you for allowing us to share our stories with you today. So I'm a mother of three young men, one in heaven, surrounded by angels. My oldest son was diagnosed with schizophrenia in his late teens. As a mom, what immediately followed was an array of questions. I asked myself, what did I do wrong? How could this have happened? But he was smart, but what's going to happen to his future? Eventually, eventually, as he was in and out of the legal system, I knew I couldn't keep him safe. I spent much of my day making phone calls, searching for help, while still caring for two younger children. In reality, I just wanted to wave the white flag and say, no more, I give up. But down inside, I knew no matter how tired or depressed I felt, I knew that I was to keep pressing, to keep advocating for this cause, to help my son. My oldest son's journey of no return transferred from the legal system to the mental health system with no resolution in sight. Tragically, his plight ended May 1st, 2012. As a mom, I experienced an avalanche of emotions. My emotions were one-day anxiety and disbelief, then grief, then guilt, and lastly, a state of depression, a daunting task for anyone to process alone. But there was a family friend that led me to the right support group where I received help. Looking back through my son's plight that ended in death, a journey of no return, I realized this journey doesn't have to end in death. As an African-American woman, and a mother, and a person of the disabled community, I'm to carry the baton to help light the way supporting the cause of mental health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have to depend on non-technical support and technical support. You don't know my story, the pain and the trials I've been through. Listen, let me tell you, no longer do the shackles concern me. You don't know my story. My story is one of deliverance. First 30, 33 years of living with depression, many times not caring for myself, not brushing my teeth, not combing my hair, not eating properly, just staying in bed with the covers over my head. Hospitalizations, weeks and months of mental anguish, trying to sleep the pain away, even trying to take my own life, when the pain became unbearable. But I want to tell you about living beyond the pain. It takes a village of support to live with mental illness, just as it takes a village to raise a child. Living my spirituality, medication, seeing my psychiatrist, weekly therapy, eating healthy, quitting smoking, support from family and friends, decent housing through Kaminar, learning how to play. I started singing again, as I did when I was a child. And I sing with the Glide Ensemble in San Francisco. And finally, giving back. I work with the Lived Experience Academy, a part of Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, telling my story and sharing with the community, with providers, with other people with mental health issues. I do a support group at 3A B, the psych unit, the locked psych unit at County Mental Health, San Mateo County Mental Health. I do a support group at Glide Church, primarily for addicts, to let them know that there is recovery. There is recovery from mental health issues, and many people who have substance abuse issues initially, not knowingly, had mental health issues. So I come to you today, and my phone just went black, to tell you that there is life beyond mental health depression, but it takes a community of support. Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, Kaminar, and other institutions that have helped me live through my depression, and now I'm on the other side giving back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable supervisors, audience members, I thank you for this opportunity to say a few words. As a child growing up in the 70s, I was really into Star Wars, Cowboys and Indians, dinosaurs, but there was a dark side to all of that. I grew up in a family where I was constantly berated, where I was beaten on often, where oftentimes I was told how worthless and stupid I am. My mom would often tell me, "I hate you, I wish I had killed you." That had a profound effect on my mental health as I grew up, even as a child experiencing these extreme states of depression, growing up thinking, "I'm that stupid worthless kid that everyone hates." And that affected me well into my 30s. I had no interest in life for the longest time. I just, as I said before, thought I was that stupid worthless kid that everyone hates. In the mid 90s, at the age of 23, I sought treatment. I sought help. I just wanted someone to talk to about the experiences that I'd been through. Instead, I was hospitalized and told, "You're sick, take this pill." I spent the next 15 years on medications that did not help me at all. I spent a number of years homeless, in and out of shelters, in and out of psychiatric hospitals, struggling with suicide ideation, unable to work, unable to sustain relationships or housing, and asking myself, is this a life that is worth living? Finally, I found that support I needed. Through counseling, through therapy, through the support of peers around me, I found the things in life that made life worth living. I found that story I was telling myself, that wasn't true. I do have worth. I do have value. I've been able to be medication-free for eight years now. I have my own housing. I'm able to sustain relationships. I'm able to take an interest in life again, to travel, to go to live theater shows. Most of all, I'm able to work as the program manager at a self-help center called Heart and Soul. I'm able to support others who are facing the same challenges that I've faced. I'm able to give back to the community. So now when I ask, is this a life, that is a life worth living, I can say unequivocally, yes, yes it is. So supervisors, audience members, I ask for your support. Can I count on you? Can I count on you to educate the public and to change the conversation from diagnosis to dialogue? From what's the matter with you to what has happened to you? From what can I do to you to what can I do with you? Thank you so much for this opportunity to share my experiences.
Wow, how can I follow them? It's tough.
Usually I speak extemporaneously, but this morning I have to read some of the things. It's too early for me. I want to say hi to the Board of Supervisors and thank you for the opportunity of letting us be here today. And I wanted to share a little bit what the county's Mental Health Division has meant to me personally. I am also very honored to be here and be a part of kicking off the month of May as Mental Health Month. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't, had not been for mental health treatment and coordinated care that I received from San Mateo County staff and the CBO partner, Kaminar. I've spent years... I've spent years and years, off and on, in hospital settings, from severe depression. Decades ago, I stopped speaking for several months at a time and had serious suicidal tendencies, then ended my marriage and left my daughter being raised by her in-laws for four years of her young life. I really didn't want to die, but I thought this was the only way of getting rid of the all-consuming pain and the inability to move on with life and take care of my child and myself. On a side note, I wanted to mention that my daughter and I are now extremely close and have been when she came back to me at nearly five years old. Fortunately, she is blessed with good health now and is a professor at Mount Holyoke College in Massachusetts for the last 29 years. It was a difficult journey, and I still battle it from time to time, it's time to time, but I am proud to share, it's been 25 years since I've been hospitalized. And I now work with Kaminar in helping other people on their journey towards wellness. I owe so much to the staff and structure of Kaminar, the organization the county works with for their severely mentally ill. They have given me invaluable support with the opportunity to become more stable several times following a hospitalization in Kaminar's Redwood House. I was then assigned a case manager and we worked together to secure a Section 8 voucher. Then for many years, while getting a bit stronger, the case manager would also assist me with other serious problems and life circumstances that I couldn't handle at that time. In closing, I want to thank the members of the Board for continuing support of people like myself and to recognize that it is more than one month of the year that mental illness needs to be considered. Mental illness is directly related to homelessness, addiction, and without comprehensive programs like Kaminar, to give hope to its population. We will only, we would only find our communities overrun and overwhelmed by these issues. So thank you so much for letting us be here and support mental health. Thank you.
Well, I think for, I speak for all my colleagues, we were really honored to have you here telling your stories. I do, I remember meeting you at Heart and Soul, in fact, when you talked about how your life had been changed and you are all, your presentations were extremely moving. I'd love to hear you at Glide Memorial, in fact, I could almost, I could, I bet, yeah, I bet you would even, you were doing a cappella here, you were great. So, all of your stories are really moving and very special. Do you have one public speaker on this? It's Martin Fox.
Good morning. Again, President Horsley, and honorable members of the Board. Thank you for your service to the county. This proclamation says, "Mental health is fundamental to everyone's health and well-being," and I agree. Well-being, however, is more than wellness. Well-being includes the satisfaction that one has, finding a purpose in life, and that that purpose can be achieved through hard work and determination in a healthy and safe environment. Persons living with mental illness, like my son, want a sense of well-being, not just wellness, without stigma and discrimination. Students of American history may recall that persons living with mental illness had the opportunity to experience well-being, including purposefulness, in a healthy and safe environment after Dorothea Dix visited a jail in 1841 and was appalled by what she saw there. People incarcerated in squalor, and she began advocating for transferring them from jail to hospitals and farms. She persuaded 20 states to treat what was called insanity at that time as an illness. We see our jails and prisons filled once again with the same kind of prisoners that Dorothea Dix saw. So what happened to her legacy? The intellectually and morally bankrupt Lanterman-Petras Short Act and other similar laws and rulings that have ravaged everyone's sense of well-being. It is time to make everyone aware that our current mental health crisis is a man-made crisis, and that means we can make things better by repealing or waiving the criminal and civil immunities the Lanterman-Petras Short Act provides to those who limit or deny treatment to the mentally ill. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. I don't think it is quite as hopeless as you think, and I think just our speakers today demonstrated that there is a lot of hope and that we have come a long way. Supervisor Groom?
Thanks, President Horsley. I just want to add a little history, if I may. Back in the mid-'80s, Supervisor Issue appointed a Task Force on Disabilities, and there was about 30 or 40 people on that, and I was one of the people that she asked to serve, and that's where I met Carmen Lee, who was one of the members of that Task Force. And I, we all learned, but I especially learned so much from her, about the struggle and the joy of illness and what you can do to overcome it, and today is just such a wonderful celebration of that. And I just wanted to kind of give that shout-out. One of the recommendations of the Task Force on Disabilities was to create a permanent commission on disabilities, and so that commission still stands and deals with some of the mental health issues as well as the Mental Health Advisory Board. Thanks.
Thanks, Supervisor Groom. We'll now go on to the next proclamation, which is the presentation of a proclamation designating April 2017 as the Child Abuse Prevention Month. Supervisor Pine, again?
Thank you. This time, I'll start with a motion to mark April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
It's hard to think of anything more tragic than child abuse. We heard a little bit today from one of our speakers about the profound negative impact child abuse can result in. The research shows very clearly that when children suffer trauma, whether that's physical abuse or emotional abuse, it will have a major impact on their lives, and we all have to work hard to support them. In this county, we do have a Child Abuse Prevention Council, which is made up of about 30 agencies that works together to combat child abuse. And I'm happy to invite today to receive this proclamation, Janelle Thompson from the Children and Family Services, and Jenny Eustace from the Child Abuse Prevention Council.
Good morning, and thank you so much for this proclamation. My name is Janee Eustace, and I'm the facilitator for the Samatello County Child Abuse Prevention Council. And I just want, again, to thank everyone here today and to say, as a child from the foster care system, who emancipated myself, it's amazing to look into our communities and see all of the innovative and promising practices available for prevention nowadays. We gather monthly, and we do a lot of work in between the month as well, to make sure that we are sharing all of these promising and innovative practices with each other and bringing it out into our community and the larger Bay Area community. So I'd like to, again, thank you all and ask for your continued support, and have a great afternoon.
Next presentation is the presentation of a resolution honoring Renee Zimmerman for her service as a coordinator of the Children's Collective Action Team. Supervisor Pine, again?
Thank you. I'm in the proclamation business today, but this one is a special one. Renee Zimmerman, we, everyone on the Board knows well, is an incredible champion of children in our community. She served on the Child Abuse Prevention Council for 11 years. She was co-chair from 2005 to 2007, and then served in the coordinator role from 2007 to 2016. Among many initiatives under her watch was the countywide child abuse prevention initiative called Enough Abuse, which she spearheaded in 2013. In addition, Renee was the executive director of Family Connections, which is a really exciting and innovative preschool program that combines kids from different socioeconomic backgrounds. So it really is a pleasure to recognize Renee Zimmerman today with this proclamation, and I'll make a motion to so recognize her.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I really wanted to have my kind of co-partners over the years in that picture, Jane Smithson and Bernie Plotnikoff, so thanks to you guys. I'm just very moved by the testimonials that we just heard, and I just want to thank everybody for this recognition because it was truly an honor to serve as the coordinator for the many years that I held that position. And for me, it was an experience that I always found rewarding and deeply meaningful and, quite frankly, a joy in many ways. For while the subject of child abuse is very serious and the need for more awareness and more resources will certainly always be present, I have to say that the leaders in this county, starting with each of you in your role as supervisors, and all of the leaders at the collaborating agencies and their frontline staff out there working every single day with the youth and families, all of you have a real, honest commitment to protecting our most vulnerable citizens from abuse and neglect. And for that, it just really made the role, I don't want to say easy, but it was very rewarding, and I always found a willingness and a yes, and how can we do this, and how can we make it better? So after 12 years, I'm, you know, back down in Mountain View as an executive at the YMCA, where I'm very happy to be able to continue that passion for prevention, albeit in a neighboring county to the south, so I'm getting to learn all about Santa Clara County. I remain a Redwood City resident, and in that role, will continue to support and advocate for child abuse prevention efforts each and every day. So thank you very much for this. Thanks.
Thanks, Renee, and good luck in Mountain View. Next is a presentation of a resolution honoring the Rotary Foundation on its 100th anniversary. Supervisor Groom?
Thanks, President Horsley, and I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution celebrating Rotary's 100th anniversary.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a close one.
There are a number of Rotarians in the room today, as you can see, and they're all here to receive this proclamation that honors the Rotary Foundation, which was created in 1917 by the Rotary International's sixth president, Arch C. Clumpf. Rotary International was founded in 1905, and the Rotary Foundation has grown from an initial contribution of $26.50 to more than $4 billion in contributions that provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and help build goodwill and peace in the world. I think the thing that Rotary is known the most for is trying to stamp out polio. As Rotarians, and those Rotarians in this room, you know that once a year, we make a contribution to the foundation to continue to make sure that polio does not take over people's lives. It's one of the most outstanding things, I think, that Rotary has done, and I think all of you remember a number, several years ago, full-page editorial in the New York Times celebrating Rotary Foundation for its work in polio. Rotary International is one of the world's largest non-governmental service organizations with 1.2 million members in over 200 countries. There are currently 42 Rotary Clubs serving the counties of Marin, San Francisco, and Samatello, consisting nearly of 2,000 people, who raise a lot of money to do a lot of local good. And so with that, I would like to present this resolution, and I don't know which one of you, which one of, or all of you, would like to accept this. Who else is a Rotarian here? Anybody? Are you a part of Rotarians?
I'm a former.
Elapsed?
I'm a lapsed Rotarian.
You should be up for two, Don.
I have a Paul Harris Fellowship.
Yes, you are.
We have a lot of Rotarians, that's nice.
It's the whole club.
This is Jerry Fuzumoto, who is the district director, the district governor of the area that Samatello County serves in.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Groom. We, as Rotarians, we give of the heart. We know that there are issues in the world, there are problems in the world that need to be solved, and we look at them strategically, and we give strategically. So through the Rotary Foundation, which is 100 years old, we've been, we've been giving, as Rotarians, as Supervisor Groom said, to help eradicate diseases throughout the world, and our number-one initiative is to eradicate polio. We started that many, many years ago, and we have held true to our promise to the children of the world that we will eradicate this terrible disease from the face of the earth. In addition, we also have several areas of focus that we concentrate on, and one of them, for instance, is clean water. I'm always amazed when I walk up to my faucet at the house and I turn it on and I get clean water, good clean water from Samatello County. But I've traveled the world, and I've seen what it's like for children throughout the world to drink water from a muddy puddle and then die from that water. So that's one of the other initiatives that we have held true to. So we have many, many more, but we would love for anybody in this room to get on Rotary.org to take a look and see what our organization has accomplished throughout the years and what we plan on accomplishing in the future. I'd like to thank Carol Groom. She is a Rotarian with the Rotary Club of Samatello, and I'll give a shout-out to the Rotarians there. And Don Horsley, who is a Paul Harris Fellow with Rotary, and he, that's a huge donation that is given on behalf of the children of the world. So thank you very much to all of our supervisors for giving recognition to the Rotary Foundation 100th year anniversary. We thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. And I know the Foundation really does fabulous work throughout the world. Next is the presentation of a proclamation designating April 2017 as the Sikh American Communities' Visaki Celebration Month. Supervisor Groom?
Thanks again, President Horsley. I would make a motion that we adopt the resolution celebrating the Sikh American Community Celebration Month.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Celebrated in the month of April, Visaki is a historical and religious festival in Sikhism. It marks the Sikh New Year. The origins of Visaki stem from a spring harvest festival to the Punjab region of South Asia. The festival celebrates the founding of the Sikh community. Sikhs are dedicated to the service of others and the pursuit of justice, and so I would like to ask Mr. Prajoty Singh- like to ask Mr. Prajoty Singh, a resident of San Mateo, to accept this proclamation.
The place was Punjab in South Asia, and the time was harvest, which was known as Visaki in that part of the world. And the tenth Sikh guru, Guru Govind Singh, made sure that it would be a Visaki to remember for all times. Supervisor Groom, the board, fellow community members, I want to thank all of you for this proclamation and sharing the Visaki holiday with us. It is a high holiday for Sikhs across the world. In fact, it's our most important holiday. And what culminated in 1699 started in 1469 with the birth of Guru Nanak, who was the first Sikh guru. The word guru is very much in vogue today. You see yoga gurus, you see all kinds of gurus up and down the peninsula. But the word guru has a very significant and profound meaning. It means someone who takes you from darkness to light. And Guru Nanak was no ordinary teacher. He was born in a time when there was tremendous injustice in the world, inequality, strife, and he preached a message of love, of oneness, of forgiveness. And he also stood firmly against injustice and turning. His weapon of choice, very apt for today, was poetry. Divine inspiration and hymns that he used to have conversations with people and show them that, you know, we are all just one. Nine other gurus followed Guru Nanak, and they all built upon the Sikh project that he started. And they worked with the disenfranchised, the lowest of the low, in South Asia, empowering them, building a spiritual connection to the divine, working to give them mental faculty and physical prowess. And now coming back to 1699, we believe that all 10 gurus shared one light, one spirit, so to speak. And in 1699, the tenth Sikh guru passed that light to the, to the masses, to the common person, by creating the Kalsa, which is a sisterhood and brotherhood that transcends social status, caste, creed, and created this, this group, the Kalsa, to stand for justice, to help those in need. And we were given an identity, you know, like the turban that you see here, kara that you'll see many Sikhs wear. And the idea was this: You're being given a tall order, right, to stand for justice, to help others, so if someone sees a Sikh, they could go and ask them for help, right? And of course, as I said, it's a tall order, right, and the identity reminds us of our responsibilities. So given our genesis as a community, you know, we've done pretty well in the world. Sikhs are hard workers, known as hard workers, and Burke and Russell said, you know, pretty much you can find the sick in the potato anywhere in the world. So we're, Sikhs came to California about 100 years ago. You know, we were farmers, laid down the railroads. The first Sikh gurdwara, which is our place of prayer and learning, was founded in Stockton in 1914. So we've been here for about 100 years, and, you know, in all walks of life, as the rest of us, we're proud to call San Mateo County our home, and thank you again for celebrating Visaki with us, and have a great day.
And before you go, if you go to the Asian Art Museum in San Francisco, you'll find a big section on Sikh Americans who served, well, have done a variety of things in this country, as well as serving in the American Armed Forces, so. With that, we'll go on to the next proclamation. It's a proclamation designating April 9th through April 15th as Public Safety Dispatchers' Week, and I have the honor to make that present, that proclamation. So I'm going to make a motion to approve that proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Truly my honor to present this proclamation. One of the things that, if you've read in the county manager's report, there's the county's Office of Public Safety Communication marked National 911 Dispatch Appreciation Week by naming two of its fine employees as Dispatcher of the Year. So I want to congratulate Brooke Hannigan and Patricia Rito, who served the county in its residence in those roles for six and 13 years. Their nominating colleagues noted that Hannigan's role as a communication training officer, and that Rita is the calm voice of chaos. And having been in law enforcement and really depended on them for my life and my lifeline, I really have always really appreciated the dispatchers. And the, there are some statistics about our centers, and I've always thought that our Public Safety Dispatch Center was the best in the county. We have, our 51 public safety dispatchers churned out 57,438 EMS incidents, that's Emergency Management Medical System, 72,839 fire incidents, 178,133 law enforcement incidents, and about 3,735 miscellaneous incidents, for a total of 312,145 incidents. If you've ever been in our dispatch center and seen all the information that comes in, how they are able to prioritize, prioritize all this information, send it out to fire dispatch, send it out to police officers, and still keep on doing other stuff at the exact same time, you really get an appreciation for the fine job that they do. So to accept the Public Safety Dispatcher Week proclamation is Dan Belleville, who is the, used to be a fire chief in his former life, and is now our Public Safety Dispatch Executive Officer.
my former life.
Good morning, President Horsley, members of the board, honorable members. Thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. Mr. Malp, Mr. Byers, Mr. Sacco, good morning. It has been a sobering morning, and I think this job also is part of that, and, Mr. Horsley, you said it well, having been in public safety yourself. I myself have been in public safety for 40 years, and when I go into the center, I too am amazed by what they do every day. If you break down those statistics, when you walk in the center, they actually churn out 1,300 calls per day. So every 24 hours, 24/7, 1,300 calls are managed. So it's a crazy place. And in fact, this weekend, we had a sobering call where a parent called because they found their teenager had taken their life. So it's those types of things. But really, what they do every day is, they are the bridge or the link between the emergency, somebody that's having probably the worst day in their life, and the first responders that they're going to dispatch, and they maintain that link. So it's a noble profession, we remind them of that, and we try to do a good job for you. So thank you for that. I'd also like to thank my staff for being here today. We are growing, we're taking on more calls, we have a lot of responsibility with the rock that you approved, so thank you very much for this honor, and we'll pass it along to them, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like, looks like I have a speaker inside. Janet, I think you actually wanted to speak on item 12, not, not this one. Janet?
Yeah, because it looks like there's agenda number nine, and that's actually number, I think you really wanted to speak on 12. Am I right? Okay.
So our next is a presentation of a proclamation designating April 22nd, 2017, as Earth Day, Supervisor Pine.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to designate April 22nd as Earth Day in San Mateo County.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it's hard to believe it's been 47 years since the first Earth Day occurred back in 1970. That Earth Day was inspired in part by the terrible oil spills in Santa Barbara that occurred in 1969. This county puts an incredibly high value on environmental values. In fact, when you look at our, our 2020 vision, one of the main pillars is environmentally conscious community. And we see those values in all the work we do. We see it in our open space, we see those values in our parks, we see those values in the litany, in the range of programs we do to promote energy efficiency and recycling. And most recently, we see those values in our Peninsula Clean Energy effort to bring cleaner electric power to the, to the county. So everyone here on this board works very hard on behalf of the environment, and it's my honor to present this Earth Day proclamation to Jim Eggermeyer from the Office of Sustainability, who will say a few words. And that, too, is a great example of how this county has shown real leadership by creating this office, consolidating the many efforts that we've had to address environmental challenges, putting them under the leadership of Mr. Eggermeyer, where they are just doing great work every day. So Jim, happy to present this proclamation.
Thank you for your time and the proclamation today on the topic Earth Day 2017. I have a few slides I'd like to share with you today. So to begin with, just as Supervisor Pine shared with you, it's been 47 years since Earth Day was first launched in 1970, and started, and by 1990, this was a global event. County departments participate in multiple Earth Day and other events this time of year and into the summer. The Office of Sustainability is participating in 30 or more events this year around this and related topics. We are reminded each year that we have a responsibility to be stewards of our planet, and the county has, as recognized in the county's Vision 2025 to support an environmentally conscious community. The county has been a leader for many years by assessing, planning, educating, and building for the future, and evaluating the outcomes of our efforts to protect and enhance our environment, looking to the future for us and future generations. Assessment and planning play a key role in protecting and using resources efficiently and wisely. I want to share a few examples of the type of work and the efforts, and they are, with Public Works, their Strategic Energy Master Plan for county facilities, the county's Energy Efficient Climate Action Plan, and Government Facilities Climate Action Plan for reducing greenhouse gas emissions for our unincorporated area and government facilities, the San Mateo Plain Sub Basin Groundwater Assessment to better understand the water resources we live on top of, the Sea Change San Mateo County, an assessment of the effects of sea level rise on 29 different assets in one community in San Mateo County. Through these assessments and plans, we better understand the baselines and measured efforts for the work we need to do to ensure the quality of life for county residents, visitors who work and play here, and for future generations. The county has been building for the future for a long time. An early county photovoltaic facility installation was almost 15 years ago at the crime lab, installed almost 15 years ago at the crime lab, and the most recent is being completed at the medical center. The medical center system will generate 1,500 megawatts per year and reduce emissions by over 32 tons per year. The county takes part in bicycle sharing and commute programs at its campuses, and car sharing is being leveraged for employees to get to work. Employees make use of low-emission county vehicles. We now have 10 electric vehicle charging stations. We use video conferencing to reduce travel time and vehicle emissions, and the health system introduced the video-direct observed therapy for patients, saving 13, over 13,000 miles of driving. Department of Public Works has converted multiple lighting districts to LED, saving over 400,000 kilowatt-hours per year. The county has installed green infrastructure projects to keep contaminants from stormwater runoff from getting into our creeks. We've also centralized garbage and food waste collection is being used at multiple departments now as a way to simplify and enhance diversion of recyclables and composts from our landfill. Water conservation projects are also being completed at sites, are being renovated, and as cooling systems are being replaced. The Parks Department hosted beach and park cleanup days for Earth Day, and the county's new project development unit is participating in a training session on how zero net energy construction works and how it pays off this Wednesday. And we are leaders. Our county was the first county in California to earn a full Beacon Award for our accomplishments. Recently, the county was awarded an Innovative Partnership Award from the U.S. EPA for our countywide collaboration with our cities on climate action. And also, our Parks Department was awarded a sustainability award for, from, a sustainable San Mateo County. And let's not forget your leadership when it comes to community choice energy, Peninsula Clean Energy, from nothing but an idea to providing three, over, or approximately 300,000 customers in the county, in every city, with at least 50% renewable energy in less than three years. There is that moment, that brief second, when we need to make a choice, a decision: What we buy, how we get to where we need to go, what we throw in the garbage, if we turn off the lights when we leave a room, if we pick up something we dropped on the ground, if we replace our lawn with native drought-tolerant plants, if we turn the water off when we hand wash dishes or brush our teeth, what we invest our money in, if we choose to be innovative, if we think about the future. Those are the moments that count every day, not just Earth Day. In collaboration with CCAG, the county library system, Peninsula Library System members, and the Office of Sustainability, we have a gift for San Mateo County residents this year for Earth Day, the Check It Out Water and Energy Efficiency Toolkit. And I have one right here with me today, just to go ahead and give you an idea of the size, and then the picture that shows what's inside this. This is going to be available at every library in San Mateo County starting today. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. I think you have your whole team in the back watching this presentation, so.
A little photo shoot out outside the lobby with the proclamation, but thank you so much.
You want to do it here? Do you want to do it in front of the board, or you want to do it in the lobby?
We're going to do it in the lobby.
Okay, well, we'll let you do it in the lobby, but thanks for, I'm not going to tell my wife about that kit because she'll start thinking I'm going to do house projects. And I hate doing them.
But they'll be good house projects.
She could do it. She's pretty good at it. She's pretty good at it. But in any case, thanks for your leadership, and thanks for your whole team. You've done a fabulous job. Thanks for Supervisor Pine and Supervisor Grim, your leadership with Peninsula Clean Energy, and we really appreciate what you've done and are really proud of it. So thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to our next matters. This is the conversation of Black History Year, and it's something that I have been doing. This time, I just thought I'd come up with some information that I had never heard about before, actually, thanks to Michael Barber pointing out something about a holiday in Washington, D.C. So I looked it up and looked up the population of the United States in 1860. In 1860, the total U.S. population, free people, was roughly 31 million people, and the number of slaves was approximately 4 million. And I know we all know about the Emancipation Proclamation, but there was something actually earlier than that. On April 16th of 1862, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Compensated Emancipation Act that freed the 3,000 slaves that were then residing in Washington, D.C. It wasn't until January 1st, after the Battle of Antietam, on January 1st in 1863, the actual Emancipation Proclamation was issued as an executive order, and it was freeing the slaves in the rebelling states. One of the things that we hear about once periodically is, what is Juneteenth? Well, Juneteenth celebrates on June 19, 1865, slaves in Texas learned that slavery was abolished, and that's why they called it Juneteenth. It's a celebration. On December 6th, 1865, the Thirteenth Amendment to the Constitution, which abolished slavery, was ratified by two-thirds of the states. The final state to ratify the Thirteenth Amendment was the state of Mississippi, and it was ratified in 1995. And in any case, the January 4th, 2005, April 16th was declared a public holiday in Washington, D.C. to commemorate the freeing of slaves in D.C., and ever since, it has been a public holiday in the Washington, D.C. Well, go on. Item number 12 is a study session to receive, oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to make?
Thank you for bringing that to us.
Well, I was fascinated, interesting, and it is part of our history, not always pretty, but it's there. So the next is to hold a study session to receive an update from Stanford University on its proposed 2018 application for a new general use permit from Santa Clara County. And I'm not sure is, hi.
Good morning, President Horsley and members of the board. My name is Kathryn Palter, and I'm here as Stanford's Associate Vice President for Land Use and Environmental Planning. Thank you very much for this opportunity to come before you. Also, before I give a presentation, I want to let you know that we also have Kirk Gerard, Santa Clara County's Director of Planning and Development here also to answer any questions about the county process.
I thought you were a rotarian for a minute, but.
And I also have some other colleagues here that will also help me answer some questions, including Jean McCown from Government Community Relations. So we're talking today about Stanford's recent application for the 2018 general use permit, and it's applied to the areas that Stanford owns in unincorporated Santa Clara County, which is shown in green on their slides. However, we're right across, these lands are right across the creek from San Mateo County, and so we're very interested to know your thoughts and concerns about this application we submitted last November. So I'll start with a brief description of our existing regulatory framework in Santa Clara County, because our application is really modeled after the successes of that structure. So the first document in our regulatory framework is the Stanford Community Plan, which is the part of the Santa Clara County General Plan, which provides high-level policy direction for Stanford lands in the county. It was approved by the County Board of Supervisors in 2000 and was meant to be an overarching policy document that would last more than one general use permit. And it gives us policy direction such as compact urban development, which allows conservation of natural resources in the foothills. And this is further reinforced with a policy that provides an academic growth boundary, essentially along Juniparisara Boulevard, which acts like a city's urban growth boundary. The policies also give us direction about reducing impacts, such as a goal of no net new commute trips, which I'll explain a little more later, and building housing as we build academic development on pace. Probably the most important policy direction from our standpoint is that of flexibility with accountability. That's because Stanford, when it makes an application like this, doesn't know exactly the types of academic facilities and housing that it wants to build. So Stanford receives flexibility with regard to the type and location of these facilities, but then is also held accountable to reduce the impacts that might come from that development, and I'll explain that a little bit more later. So the second part of our regulatory framework is actually the general use permit, which authorizes a specified amount of development and also establishes conditions of approval to reduce the impacts of that development. Both the development and the conditions of approval need to be consistent with that policy direction that's provided in the Stanford Community Plan. Stanford's currently operating under the general use permit that was authorized in 2000, and that authorized about 2 million square feet of academic facilities, of which about three-quarters has already been built. It initially authorized about 3,000 housing units or student beds. About this time last year, we went to the county and asked for another 1,450 housing units in order to support a 2,000-bed graduate student project. That was approved, and once that graduate student housing is built, we will be essentially out of our housing allocation from this 2,000 general use permit. There was also 40,000 square feet that was earmarked just for childcare facilities and community centers. So with that, the county said, you know, you can build this amount of facilities, but then they also provided 100 conditions of approval of that development. And by conditions of approval, it is such things as not increasing our peak runoff to the creeks during high, large storm events, and not increasing our commute trips. So given that we're nearing the end of this authorization, it was time for Stanford to think about what the future might hold, and so in the course of that, decided a couple of things. One is, when we make this application, there is no request to change any of that high-level policy direction in the Stanford Community Plan. That's served us very well since 2000. We see it serving us well as we move into the future. But there is need for new development requests, for new academic and support space. As academic fields continue to emerge and create multidisciplinary areas of study, we also have needs in our labs for very large and specialized spaces. And then several of our schools need updated space as well. We also see a need for more campus housing, and that is part of our development request as well. But looking forward, we also see that we want to continue supporting affordable housing in the community, continuing with our no net new trips commute goal, and maintaining the location of the academic growth boundary, continuing our compact urban development on the core campus. So specifically, what that looks like is the development request, which is 2.275 million square feet of academic and academic support uses, 3,150 housing units or student beds, again, another 40,000 square feet for childcare facilities, or we've made a slight change, facilities that support our transportation demand management programs, for example, a transit hub that might be reducing trips to campus. As we did in the past, we try to indicate where we think that development might occur on campus through the use of development districts that were established in 2000. So that gives, this map that you see in front of you, gives where we think this development could occur, and that facilitates the environmental analysis of this by the county. Most of it is centered into the main part of campus. There is no development proposed for the foothills development district, which is that yellow area you see. That's beyond the academic growth boundary. And there's also no additional housing proposed in the San Juan Development District, which is where we have our faculty-staff subdivision. The permit doesn't have an expiration, per se. It lasts as long as the development authorization takes to build out. We expect it would last until about 2035. I mentioned again that core principle of building housing on pace with our academic development. So once again, we're using the same, what's called a housing linkage ratio that we have had since 2000. That means that for every half million square feet of academic facilities we build, we must have built at the same time at least 605 housing units or student beds. And it continues in a stepwise fashion like that, so that by the time we reach the end of our academic request, we will have needed to have built 2,753 housing units or student beds. So we've asked for the ability to build 3,150, but at a minimum, we would need to have built 2,753 by the time we build out our academic. Some of the housing that Stanford built on campus actually fulfills the county's RENA requirements. The graduate student apartments that we build do meet the state's definition of a housing unit. It's different than the undergraduate beds, which are considered group quarters, and they don't count toward the RENA definition. But because of the rents that Stanford charged and compared to the median income level in the county, the county has in its housing, two housing elements that covered between 2000 and 2014 documented that Stanford provided 816 affordable units on the Stanford campus. Moving forward of the 3,000 units that we are requesting, we expect about 900 of those would be graduate student beds, which would probably be in that same apartment style that we've been building since 2000. And given the rents that we're charging compared to the market and compared to the median income, we're expecting that the county would also be documenting some of these meeting their housing allocation requirements in their future housing elements. So in addition to building affordable housing on campus, Stanford also contributes to Affordable Housing Fund that Santa Clara County managers and disburses. And Stanford makes this contribution with every academic square foot that it builds on campus. To date, more than $25 million has been generated since 2000, and that's expected to grow to $39 million by the time we build out our current academic allocation. And the county has dispersed about $13 million of that so far, and it's gone to four projects in Palo Alto and one in Mountain View, for a total of 319 new affordable housing units in the community. We propose to continue that contribution at the current rate of about $20 a square foot, having that increased through inflation over time, and we expect that that would generate another $56 million toward the county's Affordable Housing Fund by the time our academic square foot is built out. And, you know, this is sort of a unique situation. Most builders will either build affordable housing, or they'll pay an in-luffy instead of building it, and Stanford does both, as I've described. I mentioned the no net new commute trips goal, which is a high-level policy in our community plan. And what this means is these are physically measured trips to and from campus that are compared to a base level that was established in 2001, and it's measured in the peak hour in the campus commute direction. And that policy was made even stronger in the conditions of approval for the general use permit, where it became a performance standard or mitigation. And this is measured by the county. Each year, they hire and manage a consultant that goes and physically manages trips. There are two types of trips that are counted. One is actual trips coming within to the campus, and then there's also an accounting of trips that are removed from the nearby roadways through Stanford's transportation demand management programs, such as the Marguerite Shuttle. So this is a free shuttle that is provided in the community, and some people use it and don't come into the campus, but those are trips physically removed from the road. So it's those two aspects that are considered when determining whether Stanford meets its no net new commute trips goal. And amazingly, we've added a million square feet of academic facilities to campus, and we've met that goal every year since 2001. The way we've done that is through a constant evolution and improvement to our transportation demand management menu of options on campus. And we're constantly trying new things and seeing how they work, changing them if they don't work, but it's through increasing that menu of options that we've been able to do this and bring our drive-along rate from 72% in 2000 down to 50% today. We recognize that in order to meet this goal moving forward, we're going to need to expand that menu, and, you know, we're already thinking about ways in which that might happen. There's one slight little change that we've proposed in this application about how this goal might be met. So I mentioned before the two ways we have today, which is the trips removed from campus, which is shown in that purple area on the screen. That green area you see, that's our, was determined our area of impact in 2000. So those are the areas there. If we remove other people from the roadways in that green area, we also, that gets counted toward meeting our goal. What we've proposed moving forward is if by chance we don't make our goal through those two measures, which we've used in the past, we will have yet a further protection to say Stanford would pay for every year it doesn't meet its no net trips goal, we'd pay money into a fund that's managed by the county, similar to the Affordable Housing Fund, that then the county could disburse for other transportation demand management programs instituted by other people to, again, try to reduce the congestion in this local area. And with that, so that's our slight change to the program to address congestion impacts. The application that we submitted in November is very robust. Mostly what I've been describing to you is in Tab 3, the project description, what we proposed to do. But as part of our getting prepared to present that, we also did a lot of technical environmental studies so that we could better understand the impacts of our request and help it shape our application. So we provided all of those technical reports to the county and to the public for their consideration. The county's having their own experts review this information, and I want to go over just, this is on our website, if anyone cares to get a little deeper into these technical studies, but I'm going to hit on just a couple of these before I wrap up the presentation. One is vehicle miles traveled. So I've mentioned the no net new trips, which really deals with congestion impacts, but as you may know, California is moving to a new standard of thinking about traffic impacts, and it's vehicle miles traveled, and it's about reducing emissions and getting cars off the road. And so we did our own analysis of what we think our vehicle miles traveled effect is. two measures, which we've used in the past, we will have yet a further protection to say Stanford would pay for every year it doesn't meet its no net trips goal, we'd pay money into a fund that's managed by the county, similar to the Affordable Housing Fund, that then the county could disburse for other transportation demand management programs instituted by other people to, again, try to reduce the congestion in this local area. And with that, so that's our slight change to the program to address congestion impacts. The application that we submitted in November is very robust. Mostly what I've been describing to you is in Tab 3, the project description, what we proposed to do. But as part of our getting prepared to present that, we also did a lot of technical environmental studies so that we could better understand the impacts of our request and help it shape our application. So we provided all of those technical reports to the county and to the public for their consideration. The county's having their own experts review this information. And I want to go over just, this is on our website, if anyone cares to get a little deeper into these technical studies, but I'm going to hit on just a couple of these before I wrap up the presentation. One is vehicle miles traveled. So I've mentioned the no net new trips, which really deals with congestion impacts. But as you may know, California is moving to a new standard of thinking about traffic impacts, and it's vehicle miles traveled. And it's about reducing emissions and getting cars off the road. And so we did our own analysis of what we think our vehicle miles traveled effect is. The standard set by the state is they would like any project coming forward to be 15% better than the regional average for vehicle miles traveled. And with that, it might, will help the state reach its greenhouse gas goals. Stanford's study found that even with build-out of this development request that we're talking about, that the Stanford won't be just 15% better than the regional average. Our commuters will have an average VMT that's 75% below the region. And our campus residents will have a vehicle miles traveled that's 40% below the regional average. And this is really achieved through two measures. It's our robust transportation demand management, getting people out of their cars, and housing people near and close to campus. So it's actions that Stanford's taken for other reasons, but now we have the quantification of sort of the greenhouse gas benefits of those programs. I wanted to just touch on the, something that was not required by the general use permit, but the flexibility within the permit really allowed Stanford to take a tremendous step with regard to reducing greenhouse gases. And this came about with our SESI project, which was constructed in 2015. Previously, Stanford's heating and cooling of the campus and electricity supply was done through a natural gas-fired cogeneration facility. And that was replaced with a heat recovery facility in 2015. And that allowed Stanford to reduce its greenhouse gas emissions that were related to heating, cooling, and electricity production by 50%, just like that. The other important aspect of it is that is now fueled by electricity. So as the electricity supply gets greener, the emissions will continue to reduce. And to that end, Stanford developed a solar farm in Kern County and did more rooftop panels on campus, which together provide 50% of Stanford's electricity needs, and took that greenhouse gas reduction from 50% down to 68% of what it was in 2015. So that's what we've done. And then we also did a technical study to look at our greenhouse gas emissions with this development request that we're doing. And so this is again, a sort of new approach that the state is taking in its environmental studies. The state of California has established goals for greenhouse gas reductions in 2020 and 2030. And then the Bay Area Air Quality Management District turned those goals in 2020, which is reaching 1990 levels by 2020, and turned it into a per capita service or efficiency standard, saying if the region could get down to this amount of greenhouse gas emissions per person, then we would meet the state, we would contribute to meeting the state's goals. And the standard that the district set was 4.6 metric tons of carbon emissions per service population. And it's hard to read on this graph, but the gray bar is where Stanford's emissions would be. So in 2020, it's expected that ours would be 2.5 metric tons per person, well under the standard of 4.6. And then we did a similar calculation for when we expect to build out near 2030. And you would, the region would need to reach 2.7 metric tons per person in order to reach the much more aggressive goal of 40% reduction from 1990 levels in 2030. And Stanford at full build-out would be 1.8 metric tons per person. And as another way of looking at it, instead of on per capita, just total greenhouse gas emissions, there would not be an increase with the project out 2035. Just one last thing to note with regard to water conservation. As part of our 2000 general use permit, we looked at whether the development request we made in 2000 would send us beyond our hetch-hetchy allocation. Stanford gets its potable water from hetch-hetchy. And at the time in 2000, Stanford was using 2.7 million gallons of water a day. And with the academic and housing request that was made, it was expected to go to 3.2 million gallons a day, which is above our hetch-hetchy allocation of about three. And so Stanford was offered a variety of ways of addressing that impact, but chose to do the one which said, see what you can do to stay within your hetch-hetchy allocation. So Stanford did a number of water conservation programs, and the result is despite adding a million square feet of academic facilities and 2,000 housing units, the water use on campus dropped by 30% between 2000 and 2015. It dipped even lower last year to 1.4 million gallons a day, which is about half of what it is, what it was in 2000. So just to tell you a little bit about where we are in this process, here's our flow diagram of where we are. We started at that first site with community open house forums to provide some initial information about the 2000 regulatory framework and what Stanford had done. That was back in June of 2016. We held three forums, one in Menlo Park, Palo Alto, and Stanford. That was followed by our application five months later, after we were able to digest that input. There was, Stanford hosted a outreach meeting, and then the county hosted a EIR scoping meeting in January and February. Now we're really going out and seeking input. The county is working on their environmental impact report. And we're doing those on sort of a parallel process until we, eventually the county will produce an environmental impact report, which will move through the, you know, the usual CEQA process before getting to the county planning commission for recommendation to the board supervisors. So that's my brief presentation. As I said, there's several of us here. We want to hear from you and answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thanks. One thing, I mean, I think what you're doing is phenomenal on everything on the campus, and we all, I think, really appreciate what Stanford does in terms of research. I see Jean McGowan in the audience as well. The only thing is that I would, my only concern is that all the impact funds go to Santa Clara County, but the reality is that you really are impacting San Mateo County more than you impact Santa Clara County. And experientially, the traffic does, I mean, I don't, I'm not going to dispute your, that there are no new net commute trips. But your problem is that for construction purposes, they're not coming on bicycles, they're coming at trucks. And so it's your, that's where we see the impact on traffic is all the people who are coming to your campus. So there are other questions from the board? There none? Well, I'm going to point out one thing on the area, and I think, I think Jean and you probably also know that our major, or my major concern really is Alpine Road, that whole corridor does in fact, even though it's not part of the university's campus or, but it impinges, it's right on that corridor, and it does have an impact. The traffic on that area is, it's growing, and it really has changed. What an area, it used to be a pretty bucolic country lane, has become like a thoroughfare. It has lots of accidents, lots of problems. And I know, you know, I know that your, these, this current gup doesn't really have much of, you know, hasn't done, well, maybe hasn't had that much of an impact on Alpine Road, but I know the hospital has, and that traffic was, is pretty considerable. I know we've, I know Jean McGowan's really tried to take your trucks off of Alpine Road to some large extent, been relatively successful. But it, when we were, when that project was started, there was some indication that there should be a traffic light at 280 and Alpine Road, and even another one at, well, subsequently, we've looked at even at Piers Lane, just to improve the access for people who live on Stanford weekend acres. And so I think we would probably want to continue talking to you about those, that corridor, and see if we can get some relief, because it does, like I said, is that even though you're in Santa Clara County, you really impact us more so than you impact Santa Clara. So unless, I guess there are no other speakers? I don't know if, yes, would you?
Before, I just wanted to respond. So just to make sure you're aware that the traffic analysis will look at Alpine Road, the intersections at JSB and Alpine and out to 280 Alpine. And when that traffic analysis comes out, it's going to conservatively assume that Stanford doesn't make its no net new trips goal. So it's going to disclose like what it could be, but then, you know, Stanford's going to try to make it much better than that. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. And just to say, we are happy to continue talking to you about Alpine Road.
Thanks, Catherine.
President Horsley, if I could just jump in real quick. As the representative from Stanford, representative from Stanford indicated, the programmatic EIR is being prepared by Santa Clara County as we speak, and I don't know when they're planning on releasing that, but the notice of the draft has gone out. So it's in the, it's sort of in the process of being prepared. County staff is going to be very interested in reviewing that programmatic EIR and then providing, I think the plan is to actually provide comments to the, to the EIR. We're going to be, of course, very interested in any disproportionate impact on San Mateo County.
Thank you, Mr. Byers.
Thank you, President Horsley, board supervisors. I'm Kirk Gerard, and I'm the Planning Director for Santa Clara County. And I want to assure you, we don't want to be selfish in terms of mitigating this project. And we are here to hear your concerns, but most importantly, to express that we want to work with your staff throughout this project to make sure that we do understand the interest to your board and the interest to your constituents and the impacts to your communities. For traffic, we are planning to do a meeting with your staff as soon as we conclude the peer review analysis of the traffic impact study. We have hired a consultant to review the work that the consultant that prepared the traffic impact analysis has done, and we want to sit down with your staff and review those results and get some feedback even prior to the release of the draft EIR. So the specifics about how the project may impact your community, we plan to harvest in the EIR and as a part of our work preparing the EIR. The draft EIR, we plan on publishing in August, September timeframe. And then we're looking at decision-making process in the spring of 2018. And we pledge to work very closely with your board and your staff as we go along. Thank you.
I have two public speakers on this side. One is Janet Davis, followed by Diana Bailey.
Janet Davis, and I've lived on Alpine Road for 50-plus years, so I know all about traffic. And I want to thank everybody here for finally getting together with people. And I think that that's attributable in large part to my caligee and to the changing of the guard post Larry Horton at Stanford. It's just a sea change dealing with them rather than Larry Horton. And everybody knows that Stanford's a world-class university, a major contributor to the prosperity in Silicon Valley. And many of us have good cause to be thankful for the hospital and the other medical facilities. And most of my neighbors are professors or researchers or doctors at Stanford facilities or students. So none of us have a reason to hate Stanford. However, the impact on people in my neighborhood and in West Menlo Park is just horrific. And there's no relation between the impact that San Mateo County feels and the property taxes that they get, because Stanford doesn't pay very much in property taxes because they're a nonprofit. For example, 2121 Santill is assessed at just over $43 million, and yet it only pays just over $5 million in taxes because it has almost a $38 million property tax exemption. The no new trips business is kind of deceptive, and it's sort of smoke and daggers, smoke and whatever the other thing is. They, they talk about no new commuter trips, but it's only to the central campus. It doesn't take into account the other facilities that Stanford has. And they're planning to build this huge office facility at 2121 Santill Road when housing would be more appropriate, because the low-income employees at Stanford commute from Gilroy and other places. And Alpine Road is just completely blocked in mornings and afternoons. And I would just like something really serious done about the traffic. I guess that's all I have to say, but thank you for getting together with Stanford. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Janet. Is it Diana or Diane Bailey?
Good morning, supervisors, and thank you for the opportunity to comment. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm a resident of Belmont and Director of Menlo Spark, a local nonprofit working towards a carbon-neutral city of Menlo Park and a more sustainable region. And I just wanted to comment quickly on Stanford's general use permit. It's very exciting to see more development, and I think that Stanford campus is really a showcase of sustainability. But I wanted to comment on new sustainability provisions related to the permit. We heard some exciting measures, and I hope that the county can provide more direction to Stanford on this. The county has done really a tremendous job on sustainability over the past few years, developing the Office of Sustainability, launching Peninsula Clean Energy, and you all should be really commended for your leadership. It's been incredible to watch, and the whole county is benefiting. So Stanford, whether it gets power from the city of Palo Alto, Peninsula Clean Energy, or neighboring Silicon Valley Clean Energy to the south, future developments will now have very clean power, and that's so exciting. But I want to make sure that folks are aware, as Stanford develops new housing or new buildings, that there's still a need to look at the carbon impacts of new buildings and make sure that any new developments are carbon-free. So as the new developments comply with new state standards for energy efficiency and those get more stringent, that's great, and that's going to lower their energy use. But one thing we're concerned about is continued use of natural gas, reliance of this, on this fossil fuel, and attention given to making sure that new developments don't rely on natural gas and lock us into a high-carbon fossil fuel future. The city of Menlo Park adopted new zoning provisions at the end of last year in December on the Bayfront District, and those new zoning provisions might offer an interesting template for situations like this, calling for 100% renewable energy for all new buildings, and that covers not just electricity, but the natural gas. And so I hope the county can consider some type of direction along those lines. Lastly, I really want to commend Stanford for a commitment to no new traffic or transportation trips. That's a very important provision, and we strongly support that and their related programs. Thanks very much.
Thanks. Last speaker is Martin Fox.
Thank you again, President Horsley, members of the board. Over half of San Mateo County's veterans live south of San Bruno, and that means they're in the Palo Alto healthcare system. And as a service-connected disabled veteran myself, I can tell you that Stanford's development affects more than just the people that live along Alpine Road. The traffic getting from the veterans' population served in the south half of the county has a considerable obstacle in terms of traffic management throughout that area just to get down there. And I would ask you to keep the disabled veterans in mind when you take a look at this development. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. And I guess we have, last speaker is Adina Levin.
Good morning, staff and supervisors. My name is Adina Levin with Friends of Caltrain, which is a nonprofit supporting Caltrain modernization and sustainable transportation on the peninsula corridor from San Francisco through San Jose, including San Mateo County. Regarding the Stanford general use permit, would like to thank Santa Clara County for the foresighted leadership back in 2000 in terms of having the no net new trips agreement with Stanford that has allowed them to grow in place while keeping the number of car trips down. And the practices that they have used to reduce solo driving from 70-something percent to down around or below 50 is really admirable and commendable. One of the things that they have done is to charge for parking and then utilize that parking money to provide transit passes and shuttles and zip cars, so someone doesn't need their own car to get around the day. They have a really robust program. And I think that is something that I would hope that San Mateo County, the rest of the county itself, the jurisdictions, our transportation programs, can really learn from going forward and can use that to develop more sustainable transportation in our region. transportation in our region. Another thing that I noted in, sorry, I heard this sitting in the hall, I'm not sure I heard this correctly, but that Stanford was studying vehicle miles traveled, even though we are currently on the cusp of a transition, looking to vehicle miles traveled according to the new state law, and I hope that that is a robust part of Stanford's reporting on its project going forward, so we can really understand the vehicle miles traveled consequences. And one of the things that, very quickly, similar studies are showing around the region is that when housing is near jobs, that tends to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Thank you.
Thanks. Supervisor Pye.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with a question for Stanford and Santa Clara. On the slide showing the no-net commute trip goals, you showed that Stanford, you want to reduce the trips in the central campus, and then there's the green, which was the adjacent impact area, and you're asking to have this alternative method of potentially paying, providing funds to others to help with trip reduction outside this core area. So how would those funds be administered? Is San Mateo County towns and unincorporated San Mateo County a potential recipient of any of that funding for trip reductions?
I think those details have yet to be worked out, but I think the intention is, even you can see in this area of impact, that it does go into Menlo Park and other areas in the past, and that future funding would likely be in that similar region, too. Because the idea is to say, first, Stanford's going to reduce it through its own efforts and then take advantage of removing trips here, and if not, then the intention is still to reduce the congestion impacts in this area, which does go across the county boundary.
I don't know, Stanford, maybe Stanford wants to speak to that. I assume Stanford would, excuse me, Santa Clara might want to speak to that.
Again, Kirk Gerard. We've been thinking through this issue. Ideally, there'd be a Peninsula Traffic Demand Management Cooperative of all the roads and public works departments, and we could look at their priority projects, and we would just be a source of funding for those priority projects, wherever they might be in the area of impact. We don't have that infrastructure built, and as part of our trips to road staffs during the preparation of the EIR, we're going to ask each individual jurisdiction, do they have high-priority traffic demand management projects that might be fundable using this mitigation measure? And we're going to come out of that round with some more thinking about how this mechanism can work. It's a bit speculative in our minds at this point. We think it's the right direction to go, as opposed to intersection improvements, for example, but we don't think that we have the social infrastructure, interjurisdictional social infrastructure, to launch a program like this at this point. We think it has to be developed.
Okay, but I do think that, for example, a community like Menlo Park, we certainly have the wherewithal to put together a transportation demand management plan, and I think the ultimate document should probably recognize that the San Mateo County part of this green impact sphere should be potentially a recipient. And then the other one, too, that, boy, I had no, first, it's incredible what Stanford has done with increasing housing. I was thinking about how, unlike the rest of the world, when you build new academic buildings, you have to then have housing to go with it. We build all offices, and we barely ever build housing. It's kind of interesting that you've linked it to so solidly. So none of you have you done that, but you have this other affordable housing fund, which, you know, $56 million. So I guess as currently created, it's entirely Santa Clara. You know, again, as Supervisor Horsley pointed out, and it's obvious, the impacts are also in our county. So you might speak to that.
Certainly. Under the current GUP that we're under, those funds can be spent within a six-mile radius of the campus, which includes San Mateo County.
Okay.
And so your housing authority could propose, for example, an affordable housing project that would meet the criteria, and we can absolutely earmark those for San Mateo County. And we haven't conditioned the radius for the subsequent GUP, but that seems to have worked to date. So I think the traffic mitigation and the housing mitigation is definitely a cross-jurisdictional mitigation program.
Do you know off the top of your head whether any of the affordable housing funds historically have been allocated to San Mateo within that six-mile?
I don't.
Is the four projects in Palo Alto one?
Yeah, so the answer's no. Yeah.
Okay, that's probably another area for our staff to bring some focus to. But stepping back, I think there's a lot, there's so much for us to learn from what Stanford has done, particularly in the trip management and the reduction of carbon emissions. So, you know, we need to stay in close contact with you to pick up that guidance. But again, as has been mentioned by Supervisor Horsley as well, in the affordable housing area and some of these grant programs, more consideration should be given to San Mateo.
Well, first of all, we're going to have to take a short break to change the tape, but I want to thank Stanford. This has been really helpful, actually seeing what you have planned, and we do see a new spirit of cooperation. So really, really appreciate Catherine, Jean, and yourself. So thanks very much. We'll take a quick 10-minute break. We will resume the Board of Supervisors. Now, the item number 13 is a presentation of servants awards, albeit 1:30. Next item is item number 14, is an introduction of an ordinance amending Section 2.46.060 of Chapter 2.46 of Title II of the San Mateo County Ordinance Code. So, County Council, Mr. Byers.
Thank you, President Horsley. I have a brief introduction on this matter. The County Manager's Office asked our office to prepare this relatively, I think, minor proposed change to our current ordinance related to declaration of emergencies. The proposed change, as I said, is, I think, straightforward. It would allow the Board of Supervisors to review the need for continuing a local emergency once every 30 days instead of once every 14 days. So really, the change would be to simply amend 14 days to 30 days. Just for very quick context, you will recall that when, in the view of the Director of Emergency Services, and by the way, the County Manager pursuant to our ordinance code, the County Manager is the Director of Emergency Services. When our County Manager determines that there's evidence of a local emergency, then the County Manager may proclaim a local emergency. And then, as you are also aware, within seven days of the County Manager's proclamation of a local emergency, the Board of Supervisors has to get together and ratify the proclamation of a local emergency. So once declared and then ratified by your board, thereafter, under our current ordinance, the Board of Supervisors must review the need for continuing their local emergency at least once every 14 days or until the board terminates, decides within your discretion to terminate the emergency. Now, when that 14 days was written into our ordinance code, it was simply mirroring state law that existed at that time. And in 1995, state law was amended to expand the 14 days to 30 days, but our ordinance code was never changed to track or mirror that change in state law. So if the board were to agree to this change today, it would really just put our ordinance code back in line with state law. All right? Now, one can surmise that the reason for the change was simply to provide, you know, from 40 days to 30 days, is really just to provide staff and the board more flexibility in scheduling meetings to continue the ordinance. I mean, I think that's, we can all pretty much surmise that that was the legislative intent. But anyway, so that's all I have for you today. If you have any questions, I'm obviously here to answer them.
Okay. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we change the way that we report emergencies by the County Manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before we go on to the next item, we have to make, I'll just have to make a quick announcement. Our live feed is out right now. We probably will have to load the live feed, I guess, there isn't a live feed, but the video at a later point after the meeting is over.
That's correct, yes.
So we'll go on to item number 15, the District Attorney's Office's Resolution Adjusting the Assessor County Clerk Recorder's Schedule of Fees Set forth by County Ordinance Code 2.90.030 to Impose a Fee of $3. Mr. Waxstaff.
President Horsley, members of the board, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Sacco, Mr. Byers, good morning. I know you enjoyed, this is your favorite part of your morning, you get to hear from one lawyer after the other. I know that's always a favorite.
Yes.
You heard about today and those very moving presentations that you had, dealing with child abuse, dealing with childcare, dealing with mentally ill, protection for various vulnerable parts of our community. There is an additional area of our community that has been subject to victimology and gone really unprotected, and that is in the real estate fraud arena. Approximately, oh, three years ago, I sat down with Mr. Malpe and talked about this as a problem and whether it's something we wanted to address, because it had not been addressed in the county. We didn't know the extent of the problem in ours. What we did know, as you know now, that there are more than half of the counties, and certainly almost every urban county, has adopted a resolution similar to the one that's before you today, and that is to create a trust fund based on a $3 assessment to the, all of the, not all, but a certain portion of the real estate transactions. And that $3, and I'm very grateful to Jim Arizari of the Clerk's Office. He has worked with us tremendously to get us the numbers. Last year, there were approximately 116,000 of transactions that would fit within this category. And that is, after some study, what Mr. Malpe suggested to me is, why don't you reach out and study and see if the extent of our problem? And so what we did is we found a grant that was issued by the Attorney General's Office of California, two-year grant, one-time grant, and we were able to hire an inspector, Dave Wilson, who was seated in the audience next to my Chief Inspector John Warren, who is an expert in this area. He had started out as a police officer in San Mateo, he had worked in San Jose for many years, and then had become a specialist in this area. And what we found over the course of the two years is that, indeed, we do believe that there is a problem that is going unaddressed. Local police agencies don't have the experience, talent, or the wherewithal to really investigate these cases. And so to that extent, we do believe that it is an area ripe for an investigator with my office to look into this. And we have found, during those two years, we had over 300 referrals from a variety of sources. A big part of it, as you know, occurs is when you simply get the word out there to the community. That included the banks, it included the United States Treasury, which takes reports from banks on anything suspicious. They started working with us. These were things that were not occurring in our county in the past, and we have indeed put together cases. The law and the government code allows for us to have up to $10. I could have done what some counties have done, indeed, the counties surrounding us have done, they go with the $10, and I didn't want to do that. I don't think that serves the interest until we can really show that we can put the cases together. Investigating them without prosecution behind it really is not a proper approach to it. So what I have asked for here is the $3, the lowest level that is permissible. And then, as is required by the statute, every year, my office comes back to you with a report describing what has occurred in that year. And then we can do, as Mr. Malpe urged me to do two years, by let's study it, I can come back to you and say, here's what we have, and whether it warrants. I'm not asking for a full prosecutor, I'm not doing what Alameda County has, for instance, I was talking to their DA last night. They've got several investigators and two prosecutors full-time added. I'm not asking for that. I don't know what the future will hold, it will depend. As we always do in my office, we do this step-by-step, not looking to utilize taxpayer resources unless we know the problem is there. And I do believe we're going to find that. We have several cases in our office now. There is one that started to trial this morning, jury trial, felony jury trial, on a young woman who was taken away, I believe it was her grandmother's house. That is in trial right now. We had another one where there were sovereign citizens on a real estate deal in South San Francisco, where they were trying to buy a property and when they could not present, they were presenting international sovereign notes to try and get it in escrow, totally false. On that line, the people and the realtors said, well, no, I'm not going to accept these. So they went and manufactured documents and deeds that they filed with the county. We have the case that was, got some publicity in the last couple of weeks of a real estate fraud in our family law court, where it was a judge made the referral to us, based on documents that were created in this computer era, were created entirely on the computer, including court documents with court seals and the like, saying this is when the house was purchased, creating phony deeds. I think that they're there, I think we're going to find more and more prosecutions as we go through this. And to that extent, one thing I do note is that we did, as I wanted to do, contact the San Mateo County Association of Realtors to see what they felt. And the answer that was given to my Chief Inspector and Inspector on it was, we wondered why you weren't doing what's going on in other counties on that line. Again, 31 of 58, we're not the ones plowing this field. 31 of 58 counties have it, the urban counties have it, and they have found it to be successful in my speaking with them. And with that, other than being available for questions, I thank you for your consideration of this resolution.
Questions? Supervisor Pye.
This one, Mr. Waxstaff. With the .3 FTE for the deputy DA, would that be one person who spends .3 of their time, or would you have lots of deputy attorneys working on the cases?
Yeah. This area is so specialized, it's one person, and who will spend a third, approximately a third of their time on it, it would be a felony prosecutor, because these cases are felonies and that line. And it's one person who we will train, we will send to the schools, and somebody we can give these cases to when they do come in.
And then his or her other workload would go elsewhere in the office, because they'd be putting a third of their time toward this.
That's what that deputy DA will hope, as opposed to, I simply say, work longer.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. There are those mega-cases, the ones, for instance, that you just reviewed, but there may be more subtle real estate, I don't know if I'd call it fraud right now, but shenanigans, maybe, going on. Will this unit look into only the major sort of real estate business area, or will you go just below that to this other level of things? And I'm especially referring to the North Fair Oaks area as I think about this, and I'm just curious, and I appreciate your response.
No, we very much would do that. I don't want, because they're equally victimized in our community, perhaps even more so. In this sovereign citizens case that we've been investigating, part of what they did was to get the tenants out of the apartment. They were going there and actually charging, saying that the rent should henceforth be paid to them rather than to the people who owned it. And so, yes, we know that there are, the vulnerable victims do include the people like in the North Fair Oaks, and we very much would investigate and prosecute any case we can create sufficient evidence to prosecute.
Thank you, Mr. Waxstaff. Supervisor Kirim.
I was going to make a motion, if you're ready, Mr. President.
I am.
I would make a motion that we impose a fee of $3 on certain real estate instrument recordings and the establishment of the Real Estate Trust Prosecution Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And I would, if I didn't mention Dan Valim and John Byers, I couldn't do what they've done and created and helped us with. I appreciate their work in the communities, and thank all of you very much. We will report back to you and let you know exactly what our success is.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Next is the housing. It's a resolution approving fiscal year 2017, 2018, the annual action plan. Is Kent Cole here? Oh, there we go.
President Horsley, supervisors, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Sacco. My name is Rose Cade. I'm a Housing and Community Development Specialist for the Department of Housing. Every year, San Mateo County receives funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Community Development in three programs, the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant Program. The chart that's on the slide in front of you right now... The chart that's on the slide in front of you right now shows the funding trends from the last 13 years, 2003 through 2016. What you'll see is a steady decline with a little blip beginning in 2008, and then quite steep decline in 2011, and then a sort of an ongoing decline over the remaining about five years. With the exception that in 2015, our home entitlement did increase a little bit, because San Mateo County is the lead agency in San Mateo County Home Consortium, which is comprised of San Mateo County, South San Francisco, and beginning in 2016, the city of San Mateo. And so, as a home consortium, those three entitlement jurisdictions pool our money, and then those funds are allocated to projects throughout the county with a priority given to the members of the consortium. And so, there are some requirements, some set-aside requirements under these three programs. Under the Community Development Block Grant Program, we are limited to allocating no more than 15% of those funds to public services. We are allowed to charge an administration fee under CDPG of 20% of the entitlement and program income. 10% of the home funds is available for program administration, and 7.5% of the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Two other set-asides that I wanted to mention are, under the Home Investment Program, 15% of those funds are set aside for what is called a Community Housing Development Organization, or a CHODO. And under the ESG Program, we are required to set aside 40% of those funds for rapid rehousing. The remainder is allocated to emergency shelter operations, but 40% of our allocation goes to rapid rehousing. So, excuse me. The funding that is allocated for FY 2017, 2018, that process begins in December with the issuance of a Notice of Funding Availability, and generally, in December, we don't know what our HUD allocation will be, and so we make some assumptions based on our past year's funding. The numbers that you see on the chart include what we assume to be our entitlement, our allocation for FY 17, 18, and then program income that comes in under CDPG and home in the form of loan payments from prior year's loans that are made to projects, to eligible projects. The other, one line item is under Other Programmable Funds, that is a revolving loan fund that the county set up a number of years ago. So, generally, when we would come before you, which we do on an annual basis, to present the annual action plan and ask for your authorization to make our allocations, we would know what our HUD allocation was. Unfortunately, we don't know. And so, again, this is an assumption based on past year's funding, and hopefully at some time in the not-too-distant future, we'll know what that actual allocation is. So, we fund a number of different types of programs using the HUD dollars. The bulk of those dollars go to housing development, and then we also fund housing rehab programs, public facilities, micro enterprise assistance and economic development, and then a number of public services, all subject to the cap I mentioned earlier. There's sort of a general pool. Then there are core safety net services, basically, that are targeted to homeless or folks who are at risk of homelessness, shelter services and rapid rehousing, and then fair housing. We also have the Housing Rehab Loan Program. We are required to make repayments of a Section 108 loan that was made a number of years ago to fund Tressel Glen, and then the program administration and program delivery costs that I mentioned earlier. And so, the allocations of CDPG, home, and ESG are subject to a public comment period and public, or community plan. And so, we, staff reviews applications and then takes recommendations to the Housing and Community Development Commission, who then holds a public hearing, a public meeting, receives public comments, and then we come up with a recommendation to bring to you for a public hearing that we're having today. The projects that we're recommending for funding are listed both in the materials that were provided to you in advance, and then on this slide, and on this slide. I'm not going to go through all of them, but see, there are a number of organizations that do benefit from the county's ability to mobilize these federal funds. With that, I'm available for questions, and then I would ask you to open a public hearing.
Questions? Supervisor Grub.
Is this a reduction from last, the last couple of years, or about the same?
It's about the same.
And do you have any projections for the future?
No. We don't have any projections for this year, really.
I mean, we've heard that the community block grant housing funds will be reduced or perhaps eliminated, but you have no inside information?
Yeah.
I'm Doug Frederick, Housing Program Manager. We have no real information on that. At the moment, the administration's recommendation, or their proposed budget, zeroes out both CDPG and home. Personally, and I can only speak for myself, I don't think that will happen. There might be some impact, but there will be such an uproar over a zeroed-out CDPG and home that I don't think that the Congress would stand behind that.
Thank you very much.
Is there other questions or a motion to accept the resolution? Supervisor Grub.
I would.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, we do have a speaker, I apologize.
Oh, okay.
We have one speaker, and.
It is?
Yes, it's for this topic, it's Joanne Nagler. Is she available? Okay, I believe she's not here. Okay, so we can continue with the motion.
Okay, so, is there a motion? Supervisor Grub, you were making a motion, I think?
I'll try.
Okay.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2017, 2018 Annual Action Plan Pending Notification of Housing and Urban Development Entitlement Awards, and also authorize the Director of Housing at the, or the Department's, the directors' designee to execute the contracts for the programs and projects as indicated in the annual action plan.
Is there, there's a second, so all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. Go on to, next item is item number 17, it's an introduction of an ordinance amending Ordinance Code, Chapter 7.04.025, establishing a speed limit.
Thank you, President Horsley. Members of the Board, Mr. Sacco, Mr. Malpe, and Mr. Byers. I'm before you to present a recommendation from the Department to lower the speed limit on a roadway in the Burlingame Hills area of San Mateo County. The segment in question is on Canyon Road between Skyline Boulevard and the city limits with the city of Burlingame. This roadway is currently designated as a 30 mile an hour speed limit. We've done a recent traffic survey on that segment of roadway. The 85th percentile speed, which is the speed, which is known as the prevailing speed that you use to set limits, came out to be 28 miles an hour. Typically, in these cases, you round up to 30 miles an hour, but the manual on uniform traffic control devices allows you to reduce the speed limit by five miles per hour if there are extenuating circumstances. And in the case of Canyon Road, there are driveways on this roadway, it's a curvy road, and there are some sight distance issues. So our traffic engineers felt it appropriate to use that provision to reduce this by 25 miles an hour, to get down to 25. Before you are some segments from the vehicle code that kind of define how you set speed limits. I will point out that the California Vehicle Code, Section 627, which defines what a residential street is, defines what a residential district is from a purely physical perspective. I will point out, on Canyon Road, this roadway is zoned as a collector street because of the characterization of the traffic on it. So although it does fall into the sort of geometric definition of a residential zone, it's designated as a collector due to its characteristics. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? There being none, is there a motion?
I'll move approval of the item.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. And we are now at item number 18, it's the Resolution Approving a Work Plan to Develop a Green Infrastructure Plan.
Good morning, President Horsley, Board members, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Sacco, Mr. Byers. My name is Jim Egomire, I'm with the Office of Sustainability. Thank you for your time this morning on this topic, the San Mateo County Green Infrastructure Work Plan. The Office of Sustainability is here on behalf of Public Works, Planning and Building, and Parks to provide an overview of stormwater and share the San Mateo County Green Infrastructure Work Plan that the four departments are proposing for your review and consideration today. We've outlined here a number of goals for today's presentation. These include providing an overview of what stormwater is and why it is important, providing some background on the, excuse me, San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board Regulations, and the MRP, introduce what green infrastructure is, and the San Mateo County Green Infrastructure Work Plan, and provide some background on the countywide's approach we're taking with this program. And then, at the end, we'll be asking for your consideration regarding adopting a resolution approving our work plan attached to your board memo today. So what is stormwater? So many people do not really know that stormwater runoff flows directly from our streets and sidewalks to the ocean and the bay. When the natural landscape is urbanized, impervious surfaces are created that prevent water from being absorbed at these locations. Stormwater runoff increases as urbanization and impervious surface also increases. In addition, rain washes the pollutants from streets, parking lots, homes, and yards into the storm drain system, and that then are discharged directly into our creeks, the bay, or the ocean. This pollution impacts human health, recreation, and aquatic life. So what is the MRP? This permit is issued by the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board. Our current permit went into effect on January 1st, 2016, and the MRP regulates stormwater issues for 76 permities throughout the Bay Area, including the unincorporated San Mateo County. This MRP addresses the full spectrum of stormwater issues from municipal and commercial operations, construction, monitoring, to education and outreach. Stormwater runoff carries various amounts of varying pollutants, including mercury and PCBs. The Water Board requires that each jurisdiction address mercury and PCBs by developing a green infrastructure plan. Today, we are here to share with you how the county is working towards meeting these green infrastructure goals. Unlike traditional storm drain infrastructure, the channels polluted runoff directly into receiving waters without treatment. Green infrastructure uses vegetation, soils, and natural processes to manage water and create healthier urban environments. Green infrastructure uses natural systems to capture, treat, and infiltrate that stormwater. Water quality improvements are achieved because green infrastructure filters and removes this excess sediment and other pollutants from stormwater runoff. So green infrastructure examples include rain gardens, bioswales, rain barrels and cisterns, green roofs, permeable pavement, and street tree planting. Here's an example here of Donnelly Avenue in Burlingame. So what are some of the benefits associated with green infrastructure? They go beyond just the water quality improvements, they include air quality benefits achieved where trees are planted, and other vegetation, flooding mitigation, because runoff is now infiltrating in that green infrastructure area, groundwater recharge through the infiltration, enhanced aesthetics, creates more beautiful and livable communities. And green infrastructure can also incorporate into a complete streets design, which improves pedestrian and bike safety. So, the Water Board issued specific green infrastructure requirements in this most recent MRP to us. So these requirements include each permitees, governing body, or the county manager adopt a work plan by June 2017. This is the reason we are here today, is this work plan. Next, within two years, by September 30th, 2017, the county is required to develop and adopt a green infrastructure plan. The GI plans are intended to create a paradigm shift in how the county manages stormwater moving forward. Traditional flood control-type drainage systems will not be the norm anymore. Shifting to a more sustainable way of managing stormwater, the Water Board is requiring that collective implementation of these plans achieve this improvement in our bay. And ultimately, when the Water Board is looking for at the end of the permit term, is firm commitments to implement, which will require all agencies to address the funding associated with that implementation. The 20, 2020, 2030, and 2040 is the timeframes in which we'll be dealing with reducing mercury and PCBs. The county, during the next two years, will be working in conjunction with CKEG to set the targets for the amount of impervious surface from public and private projects relative to the areas to be fitted with this green infrastructure. The targets will also help us align with the load reductions that PCBs and the mercury that is being set by the Water Board as a region. So the Green Infrastructure Work Plan is the framework, essentially kind of sets up kind of what we'll be having in our plan and bringing back before you in two years. The work plan is attached to your board memo, which includes the introduction describing what green infrastructure is, the regulatory requirements, and describes in detail the required elements of this plan. The work plan also details how the departments and other responsible organizations will be working together. Moving on, in two years, what we will be having for you is this Green Infrastructure Plan that will specifically detail how the plan, the county plans to make the transition. And the plan will include project prioritization and mapping, design and construction guidelines, or modifications to county policies and ordinances, evaluation of funding for design, construction, and long-term operations of maintenance. It also will include outreach, education, and our work plan for completing the prioritized projects, and a project tracking system, so we can be accountable. Whoops. A key component of this plan in the MRP is the inclusion of both private and public property locations for GI systems. This has been done in order to plan, analyze, and implement, and credit these systems that are being implemented for pollution load reductions on a much larger watershed scale, as well as recognizing that all green infrastructure accomplishments within municipalities. So it's a public and private effort towards improving our water. However, the focus of our plan and the work plan is the integration of these systems within public rights of way. We do have direct control over that, working with our Public Works Department. The GI plan is not intended to impose retrofit requirements on private property outside of the standard development applications review process, essentially one of those which is considered to be kind of a major application, or a major project, or redevelopment would, could possibly trigger some requirements for GI. So our county approach in our Green Infrastructure Work Plan is detailing how our approach to develop and meet the Water Board's requirements. So our. So all of our departments are envisioning both internal and external collaboration. So across our departments, we're also going to be working with and thinking about how the flood and resiliency program and our sea level rise efforts play into this. We'll also be working countywide relative to the pollution prevention program, and then also working with our collaborative cities on partnerships and special districts on a watershed scale approach. So departments have estimated major costs for these efforts for the next five fiscal years. Green infrastructure plan development and implementation requires increases in funding resources, staffing efforts, and consulting services. These tasks include early implementation of green infrastructure projects. Those are what are occurring right now, even in our thoughts relative to what could be implemented, updating our plans, our policies and ordinances and operations, and then also future maintenance of those projects. So these efforts will not be easy and without costs. Staff, we'll be providing you in the future with more information on what the MRP targets look like and what implementation means. So with that, I thank you very much for your time this morning. And in closing, we're recommending that your board adopt the resolution approving the San Mateo County Green Infrastructure Work Plan. If you have any questions, I'm available, and staff has also joined me here today, too.
Questions?
Mr. President, just to underscore one of the sections of the report, although we don't know what the actual cost to implement the plan are at this time, we do know that it's going to run into the several millions of dollars a year, and those will be reflected in your budget. Those are currently unfunded costs. And even if it is possible to get an SB 90 mandate, it's unlikely that that mandate would cover the full cost. And as you know, there's a long lead time between when we incur the costs and when we are reimbursed by the state. So this is one of the items that I've been referring to the board that are really unbudgeted at this time, but known in the sense that in the future, in the immediate future, we're going to have some real costs that we're going to have to meet.
In fact, I know Supervisor Cannavaro and I both probably have served on CCAG, and essentially, it's going to be a major cost to all the cities as well. They were at one time looking at some kind of vehicle registration fee, but that's really not possible any longer due to Prop 218. So it is, it's going to be a very costly undertaking. There's a couple of projects, like in my area, Seal Cove, where there's vegetated bioswales, and Carlo Street, so I have seen them, but it's going to be a major problem in many of the unincorporated areas where we don't have sidewalks and we don't have storm drains. And most of our roads are very undersized as it stands, and to create these things, bioswale is going to be very difficult, so real challenging. So maybe you and I could talk later offline.
Yeah, and I think I can involve Public Works in those discussions as well, some of the things that they've been thinking about as part of their program.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing, well, approve the resolution authorizing the work plan?
Supervisor Groom, thank you very much for...
I make a motion we adopt a resolution approving a work plan to develop a green infrastructure plan in accordance with provision C 3 J of the municipal regional permit.
I'm going to second that motion. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will now go... Thank you. We'll now go on to item number 19. It's a resolution authorizing appropriation transfer request of Measure K revenue expenditure of about $78,450. Mr. Porter, are you going to talk to that issue or shoot? I mean, I could. What this comes, what this comes about is because of, we had been getting a lot of requests from our Bike and Ped Committees to do something about making bicycle travel safer on Santa Cruz Avenue in West Menlo. There's actually a typo in your report that indicates it's Menlo Oaks, it's West Menlo around University Heights. In any case, we actually, the initial proposal was to see if it was possible for us to eliminate street parking. And of course, we, that didn't meet with much favor, so as one could expect. So the citizens who were gathered that night asked if we could hire a consultant to help them figure out how they could make bicycle travels safer on that roadway. So that's essentially what this is about. And I know we've, all of us have received some emails about the corridor. That's a much more complicated issue, it's a very heavily traveled corridor with Uniprecera and Sand Hill. We're really not dealing with that. We're simply dealing with a relatively simple matter of taking a study of that corridor to see if we can make it safer for bicycles and at the same time, not impacting or negatively impacting parking. We did, one of the requests that our Bike and Ped Committee asked us to do in the meantime is, I guess not really an urgency item, but just as a temporary item, is to put sharos in one of the lanes. And we have done that. I think we have done that, or at least we're in the process of doing that. So that's essentially the issue. Mr. Porter, did you want to make any other comments on it?
Certainly. As President Horsley pointed out, this project began as a request to look at adding bike lanes on this section of Santa Cruz. As we found with everything, nothing is simple. You have a limited amount of ride away, you have a need to get pedestrians through the corridor as well as bicycles, and you have a highly impacted intersection at Sand Hill and Santa Cruz Avenue that is operating at Level of Service F. So there is a need to move vehicles and bicycles and pedestrians through the corridor. And what we find is that, as in life, everything is about trade-offs. So we will be making decisions with the help of our consultant that will ultimately bring to your board as to what trade-offs we want to make on this corridor, be it elimination of parking to allow bike lanes, elimination of vehicle lanes to allow bike lanes, which will have a negative impact on level of service on the roadway as well as that intersection, but also the ability for the residents to live on that corridor, to be able to access their home safely, to get in and out of their driveways. So although it seems like a simple task, there are many variables that come into play. What we're asking for today is simply an authorization to get some funds, to then go out and retain a traffic engineering firm to take a comprehensive look at this issue.
Okay, and we just, we do want to make sure that this is not something that we're going to decide by ourselves. It's really going to be something that we're going to work with the community on, and that, that's the intent of this, so that's...
Certainly, and I think that's a very important point, President Horsley, because at the end of the day, the community has to live with this.
That's right.
And by community, it's the bicycling community, and it's also the residents that live on that block. So there may be some competing issues there, and we need to understand that going in.
So there are four speakers on this. First is Janet Davis, followed by Molly Glennon, and then Ron Snow.
I had a problem this morning commuting along that stretch because of cyclists. You have to go very slowly, and then people honk at you behind and give you the finger. And you try to get in the other lane, and people honk at you and give you the finger there. So I was wondering if the center turn lane could be squeezed a bit, because that's not always used. And I know it's very, very hard for people who are coming towards Sand Hill to get down Palo Alto Way. And the other thing is, I don't see why the county is paying when this is one of the areas that the negative declaration for 2121 Sand Hill is talking about. They're saying, oh, there's no bike lane on Santa Cruz Avenue. Oh, dear. They should be funding some of this. They're planning to put this 49,000-square-foot office building right where you've got an F intersection. It makes no sense. So somehow, you have to talk to Stanford and twist their arms a bit and get some more money.
We have to deal with rudeness on the part of people and the vehicles as well. Molly Glennon and Ron Snow, and Cheryl Cho-Flan as last.
I just want to say thank you, because that was a great introduction to where we, we as residents of Santa Cruz and Alameda Corridor would like to spend some time talking today. So first and foremost, let me just say thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to present some comments. And I want to say that I completely agree with, I believe it was Jim Porter who just spoke, that it may seem like a simple task, but it's not, which is exactly why I'm here today as a resident of the intersection of Santa Cruz and Alameda. I am representing residents of both the Santa Cruz and Alameda Corridor, and yes, it is a corridor. It can't be something that can be split off. So it's very important to be thinking through the larger picture, which is, again, why we're here today. In the community meeting, there were three things that were agreed upon. The first one was that you would go back, the county would go back, and start over to address the safety of the corridor. Part of that would be, or actually, I should say, the focus that we all consented on in that community meeting was a complete streets approach. That means looking at addressing safety for pedestrians, for schoolchildren, getting to bus stops, and the local schools that are only a few blocks away but treacherous to get to by foot or cycling. We've had six accidents over a five-week period in the month, at the time period of May, March, and April. The second thing that we consented on was including residents and community and giving them an opportunity for input. Serendipity is not a good way to govern, yet that is exactly why I'm here today. We reached out to DPW several times, and we were not informed of meetings where there was a meeting, on the agenda, there were topics that impacted us in this corridor.
Molly, could you summarize, please?
Yes, so the, the last thing that we talked about and consented was that we would come back to you, or you, Supervisor Horsley, would come back to you and ask for funding. I think it's putting the cart before the horse. We've not done a thorough analysis, we've not had community input, and we haven't looked at the entire corridor. We're segmenting.
Thanks, but that's what the intent of this is. So in any case, Ron Snow, followed by Cheryl Cho-Flan.
My name is Ron Snow, and I live in the University Park neighborhood. President Horsley, thank you again. I was just getting to be more frequent here. And I, many of you are aware of this area. Supervisor Groom, I think, I know you've, in past areas, have visited this area. It's a very unsafe area. And this resolution, I think, has some lack of thoroughness here, in the sense that this, the agreement and the understanding is, is that this is a corridor that needs to include Alameda. And so I would suggest that this resolution be changed to include the Alameda portion as well as the Santa Cruz portion. This is not a resolution, from our understanding, for bikes. This was for bikes, pedestrian safety, this was everything. And this is an area that not only includes residents and traffic, but includes parents. And so there's a lot of parents that use this, a lot of children use this. And one of the things I handed to you was a chart showing, documenting some of the accidents we've had just in the last six months. And one of the things that DPW has done in setting our speed limit in this area, for example, is their study of, six years of traffic showed three accidents. Well, our documented accidents from Menlo Park Fire and the CHP shows we have a 5,200% increase from that number. I know that sounds sort of weird, 5,200% increase. This is something that we're asking you supervisors to step in and help reduce that speed limit. We'd like to have the funding, rather than being applied necessarily to just a study, some of that funding I would like to see applied to some short-term, low-cost aspects of this. Lower the speed limit, correct the signage, and fix the crosswalks. And then lastly, as this affects item 17, there you saw that safety was a factor, and you were able to reduce the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. In our situation, the speed limit for only 800 feet is 35 miles an hour on Santa Cruz. Everywhere else on Santa Cruz, it's 30 miles an hour. On Alameda, for another, just for 1,000 feet, it's increased to 35 miles an hour, and that's just the section that the kids use. Okay, so it doesn't make sense that these short little areas are 35 miles.
Ron, can you summarize it? Thanks. Can you summarize it, your comment?
Yeah, so what I'd like to have is, is that the resolution include the Alameda section, and the resolution allocate funds to do the short-term fixes, and to work, and to continue to work with the community to set the guidelines on what we want to do with the rest of money.
Thanks, Ron. Cheryl Cho-Flan?
Supervisor Horsley and the rest of the board, thank you for this opportunity to comment regarding the Santa Cruz Avenue corridor study. As a resident of this area and as a supporter of the bicycling community, I attended the community meeting on January 23rd where the corridor study was created. There was consensus that bicycling along a corridor is dangerous, but please note, please remember that we also had consensus that our corridor is dangerous for pedestrians and motorists. We emphasized that the priority must be to make it a safer street for everyone through a comprehensive analysis, and we requested community engagement every step of the way. We thought we had our voice, we thought that our voice had been heard. DPW created a website link that states, in quotes, "The goal of the analysis is to determine if safety and functionality improvements can be achieved for vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians on this section of the roadway," end quote. So again, we thought that our plea to address safety for all had been heard. However, the community has waited patiently to be engaged, only to find out that the proposal before you is for an alternatives analysis. Frankly, what that constitutes remains unclear, as our requests for engagement have been denied. We are concerned that an alternatives analysis only represents a simulated study of vehicle lane reduction and turning movement restrictions. It appears that no actual data will be collected about Santa Cruz Avenue and will therefore be speculative. So, before deciding upon whether or not to approve funding for this request, please note that the residents of the corridor do not have faith that the request before you will in fact be money well spent. The question before you appears to only address how to create space for a bicycle lane. We respectfully request that you vote against funding this request and instead call upon DPW to run a pilot reconfiguration program to collect real-world data. Simply stated, on a residential street like Santa Cruz Avenue that carries a heavy traffic burden, the overriding issue must be safety, safety for drivers, bicyclists, pedestrians, and residents, including our children and our elderly residents. Please don't spend money on a proposal that doesn't even attempt to address safety for everyone.
And I think you misinterpret the intent of this. The intent was to, that's, that's good, I was just going to make my comments. The intent of this was to actually have community meetings to talk about the corridor. I'm sorry that it doesn't explicitly talk about all those issues, but that's the intent, is potentially to look at that corridor on Santa Cruz. It doesn't, we're not looking at the Sand Hill, we will work with Menlo Park on it as well, but I, you know, I think you're, I think you're expecting that the resolution or the item would delineate all the issues that you bring up. We're all aware of those, and that's, that was, it was at the community meeting, and that's why we wanted to do this. It's actually not DPW that'll be doing the study. It'll be something that you and your neighbors will all be actively involved in, and so you will be able to talk about things like speed limits and the crosswalks, and the potential of making it safer for both pedestrians as well as bicycles. I don't think, I mean, I agree that the writer probably doesn't, isn't that explicit, but that's the intent of it. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the appropriation transfer request, transferring $78,450 from non-departmental... request, transferring $78,450 from non-departmental services, Department of Public Works to fund a corridor safety improvement analysis for Santa Cruz Avenue between Sand Hill and Sharon Road in West Menlo. One favor? Thank you very much, and thanks for your comments. I did, we do take them serious, and you will have lots of opportunity to speak. It may not be perfect, but you know, don't make the perfect the enemy of the good, so. Let's go, okay, we're gonna go on to the next item. Item number 20 is another Measure K. Oh, wait a minute, I took that off, I took that off the agenda, sorry. Item number 21 is a resolution, one-time grant of district-specific Measure K funds not to exceed $60,000 to Nuestra Casa to support the organization's six-week parent and youth academy. Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of time, I'm gonna speed this along and just comment that, as we all know, there are families who are stretched and live in neighborhoods that where questions about communications, academics, healthcare, for instance, achievement in schools arise, and parents sometimes aren't equipped because everybody's working three jobs, and there's a parent academy that we actually funded last year in East Palo Alto, and the request before you is to fund that same Nuestra Casa parent academy again this year to the tune of $60,000. And it really is a successful program, so I would make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing a one-time grant of district-specific Measure K funds not to exceed $60,000 for Nuestra Casa's program.
One favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are now into item number 22, the approved revisions to Measure K allocation plan regarding affordable housing fund. Mr. Malpe?
Raina.
Oh, Raina, sorry.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Sacco, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Byers. I'm Raina Faralis with the County Manager's Office, and I'm here today with Ms. Peggy Jensen and our housing staff to present to you revisions to the Measure K allocation plan. So as your board may recall, at your April 11th meeting, we provided some reports regarding capital financing, technology, and affordable housing, as well as the Measure K allocation plan, and your board directed us to develop some options on how we could increase the allocation of Measure K towards affordable housing. So for today, we'll present a couple of options for your board to consider, as well as how the affordable housing plan would change with one or the other option, and we are seeking your direction today on how to allocate Measure K funds for the next two years. So just as a quick recap, I went over the April 11th meeting. Since that time, we did meet with the Measure K Subcommittee, which is Supervisor Slocum and President Horsley, to go through the options that we're presenting to you today to look at increasing the affordable housing allocation from 15 to 25, up to $25 million per year. And the Subcommittee did meet last Wednesday. So option, I'll present the two options, and then Peggy will go through the affordable housing plan. There are two options we're presenting to you. The first is to increase the allocation to, of Measure K to affordable housing up to 47 and a half million for the next two years, instead of the 30 million that we presented in April 11th. And then option two is for $40 million for the next two years, instead of the 30 million. So under the first option, if you look at that first line, affordable housing, it increases from 15 to 22 and a half, and then up to 25 million after the second year. And the way that we would fund this increase is summarized in the rows below. So the changes would be, one, to defer the work that we're doing around high-risk youth and looking at doing community asset mapping. This is the Census Tract work that we're doing with the Community Vulnerability Index. So we would defer that work. It has started, but it's still very early on in the process, so we'll defer that for the actual initiatives to start in fiscal year 2020. The second item is on the SAM Trans contribution. We're currently budgeted at $5 million a year, so by the end of this fiscal year, we would have provided SAM Trans with $20 million total. What we're recommending under this option is to reduce that by 25% in the first year, by half in the second year, and eventually phase it out, eliminate it in the third year. And there are transportation funds that have been approved at the state level, and we have been informed that SAM Trans will receive $44 million over the next 10 years. And then also another option is the board district-specific funds. As you know, we've allocated three and a half, your board has approved $3.5 million a year for district-specific purposes. We would reduce that to half for the next two years, and then replenish it to the $3.5 million level after year two. And on information technology projects, oh, and under the district-specific funds, in your report, there is an exhibit, Exhibit 1, that lists all of the loans and grants that the board has provided over the last two years. And under IT projects, we would look to defer some of the network bandwidth projects and some of the productivity enhancements that we were looking to put in place over the next two years, so we would reduce IT projects in the next two years, and then replenish it back to 5 million, and try to catch up at that point. And then lastly, with the Verity Agreement that went to the board last fiscal year, it was through fiscal year 2019 at $5 million a year, and so that would conclude the county's obligation, and those funds would be freed up for affordable housing and for other purposes here. All the other items remain unchanged. So as you see, in total, the Measure K allocation remains at $82 million, we're projecting for the next two years.
Can I ask one question while we're on this slide?
Yes.
On the North County Healthcare Seton, I mean, it's my recollection that, you know, we reached a agreement with Seton and decided to provide this funding in FY218, FY219, and that was kind of the extent of the commitment. I mean, in other words, it seems to me, why isn't this all in the unchanged category? I don't see any change. I believe we have no, I believe we've contractually or at least given our word that we're gonna pay these amounts to Seton, the five and the five.
You're correct.
Correct.
So there really is an unchanged item?
Right.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, that should have been.
Right, but we may, there's no current commitments beyond those two years, beyond fifth, yeah, so I just wanted to point that out, that that one isn't subject to change.
Correct.
We have another question over here.
Supervisor Groom?
Thank you. I'd like to ask if the 44 million that is coming to SAM Trans in the state includes funds for paratransit. I mean, then my original request for the 5 million a year was specifically for paratransit services, the kind of paratransit services that serve the county's clients.
Through the, through the president, those are funds, as my understanding from the State Department of Finance, that are fungible on the part of the district, so they could spend them on any funding, any, any district activities that SAM Trans has, including paratransit. Any other questions? Go ahead, Raina.
Okay, so the next slide really just provides a recap, bullet form of what was presented in the previous table. I'll move on to option two. So option two would provide $40 million towards affordable housing over the next two years. And the way we would achieve that is, again, through deferring the community asset mapping project to fiscal year 2020. The SAM Trans contribution would be reduced by half next year, and then remain at that level for one more year, and then phase out starting fiscal year 2020. Verity drops off, as Supervisor Pine pointed out, that's contractual obligation, it completes in 2019. And then our recommendation for the $5 million that have been freed up from Seton is to set that aside for unfunded reserves, unfunded initiatives. You heard this morning from Mr. Egemeyer about green infrastructure. We also have a number of major business system projects, like the property tax system and the radio system, as well as the mental health, correctional health projects at the jails, that we would want to set aside money for that. And then all other items here remain unchanged. And that is the recap for option two for Measure K. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Jensen, Mr. President, and she can go over the housing allocation.
Thank you, Ms. Faralis. So as your board may recall, at your prior meeting, we talked about some principles around how we were recommending the allocation of the Affordable Housing Fund money for Measure K. And those principles centered on helping as many families as possible. By leveraging our county investments, getting as much money per every dollar we contribute, and also by investing cost-effectively, by reducing the amount of money we contribute to each project and leveraging other funds. We've applied those same principles to our recommended allocations for the two options before you. What we are recommending, as you can see on the first line for the Affordable Housing Fund, is fully funding all of the Department of Housing pipeline. That means 31.6 million dollars for 600 units and projects that we expect to close over the next two years, and for 800 units that are currently in the pre-development stage. So 31.6 million dollars, you'd be fully funding that pipeline. We suggest that you consider doing that for both option one and option two. The next line, the Affordable Rental Preservation Program. At the higher funding level, at 47.5 million dollars, there would be 7.9 million dollars available for your rental preservation program. As you may recall from our past meeting, compared to the Affordable Housing Fund, rental preservation, our unit contribution averages about $150,000 per unit compared to about $60,000 for the Affordable Housing Fund for new development, and our contribution is about 36% of the total project cost compared to 10% for new development. But at 47.5 million dollars, you would have just under $8 million for the rental preservation fund. That would also leave another $5 million available for either the Heart Workforce Loan, revolving loan program, or you could increase the rental preservation program if that's what you chose to do. So together, what we're recommending for option one is an investment of 44.5 million dollars in affordable housing preservation and new development. That's about 93, it is 93% of the total allocation. The difference for option two, what we're suggesting you consider, is that you reduce the, the reduction in the amount of available money comes in a reduction to the rental preservation program. And you can see from the chart, the difference is about 7.5 million dollars. So it would only be about $400,000 left for the preservation program. So that's the significant difference in this recommendation. As you can see from the bottom of the table, we are not recommending any change in either the funding for the attendant assistance programs, or for our ongoing programs and staffing, which is $3 million for each year. Before I turn this over to the board for questions, I'd like to make two points. As you heard from Ms. Cade and Mr. Fredericks this morning, we don't know what the home and CBGG funding is going to be. So I would strongly recommend that you ask staff to return probably in October, when you may know what your funding might be, because as we mentioned at the past board meeting, and as they mentioned today, plus or minus $3 million from home and CBGG could be available for any of these programs that you would choose to fund around preservation or new development. And finally, I'd like to reiterate the final recommendation that staff made when we presented to you our recommendations at the lower level last week, and that is, no matter what level you choose to afford the rental preservation program, or fund the rental preservation program, that you ask us to do some additional research and come back to you with some analysis of that program on ways, suggestions on how to improve the cost effectiveness. And I anticipate that we also could come back to you with that, those recommendations sometime in October. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Department of Housing staff are here also if you have specific questions about projects.
Sorry, Supervisor Pine?
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. I wanted to talk a little more about the rental preservation. So as you point out, and as we were informed at the last meeting, it's a very, very expensive way to create housing, at $152,000 per unit. So I'm assuming that you must feel very strongly that the pipeline at 31.6 is the maximum. In other words, if the board decided to increase, particularly under option one, and we had another $8 million available, you know, it would seem to me, and I would hope that some folks from the housing community can talk to this when they testify, that I don't believe that 31.6 is necessarily the definitive, definitive pipeline for all possible housing, affordable housing that could happen in the next two years. But you must feel that very strongly to allocate $8 million to what's a pretty inefficient way to create housing.
What I'd like to do is turn the microphone over to the Department of Housing folks. They have done a very detailed analysis. They are in constant communication with the housing developers in our county, and their analysis is that the 31.6 is a good number. What I can tell you, and is that it is an estimate. We don't know exactly what this number is going to be. As we mentioned when we met with you before, that there are uncertainties at the federal level, as in terms of how much money through the tax credit program, which funds, what, about 50% of most of these projects, actually even slightly more, whether or not that money is going to be available in the same amounts for these projects that has been in the past. You know, one scenario, because of all these uncertainties, might be to go forward with whatever number you recommend, and then we come back to you after you've done your next round of funding to provide an estimate of where we stand in terms of the new development proposals. Because you're gonna be going out for another round of funding in July?
Month or two.
In a month or two? So we'll have, we'll know, we'll have a better sense of what that data is, what those requests are going to be fairly shortly.
Just to make one comment about the, one of the reasons we did rental preservation, I understand that it's not the most efficient. The advantage is that it's immediate, as opposed to oftentimes, development takes years. So that's one of the reasons that we did it in the first place. I agree that it's not the most efficient, and we probably, that's not our preference, but sometimes it becomes an option, a viable option.
Yeah, while we're on the point, and this is a secondary or tertiary point to the major discussion, but I would be inclined to, you know, have an affordable housing fund and have, you know, all the funds in there, and then if staff wants to bring us a rental preservation fund proposal, you know, we could look at it. I'd just, I'd just be reluctant to take a whole $8 million and put it, you know, you know, you know, kind of isolate it like that. But that's, again, we have some other decisions to make first.
Other comments before I take public comments? Supervisor Slocum?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I would just ask Supervisor Pine to say that once again. I think I heard it, but could you just go through?
Yeah, I mean, so we have Supervisor, when it comes to the affordable rental preservation, you know, this is something that I didn't appreciate until really the last meeting, that because of the way the tax credits work, and they're, I believe they're generally not available for preservation, the amount that the county has to contribute is substantial, and I think is average 152, but I think we've been higher than that in some particular projects. So that's the downside of the reservation. Supervisor Horsley makes a good point that it is quick, and so there's something to be said for that. So I'm thinking that once we figure out how much we're gonna allocate to housing overall, that, you know, maybe we not distinguish, maybe we have an affordable housing fund where, you know, we will look at applications as they come. If, you know, if there's some emergency and the board feels it's worthy of that extra investment for preservation, then we could pull it out of that fund. But I, but when I look at it as proposed on this slide, you know, I would be, I'd be uncomfortable if we spent 8 million on rental preservation in the next two years. And that's what, that's, the slide would suggest that you couldn't use that 7.9 except for rental preservation. So I just kind of collapse it together.
And that's only for option one?
I would do it in either case. In that, I'm just, I'm nervous about allocating money specifically for rental preservation, where I think it's gonna be an exception. I think, I don't think it's, I hope we don't do it too often. To Supervisor Horsley's point, there may be, it may be there's a case. Maybe there's a case, maybe there's two, that we just say that, well, okay, $125,000 a unit or whatever. But I personally hope that we don't do too much of that, just because it's so expensive. So I'd just like to not have a dedicated set aside for that.
If I may, through the President, each of the Rental Preservation projects, due to the dollar value, is brought to the board for specific approval.
Right. I guess I have just one last comment. The one advantage on it is at least there's a limit to what we could conceivably spend on Rental Preservation. But that's the... But I, in general, kind of agree with what you're saying. So if there are no other questions, there's a number of public speakers. First one is Seamus Murphy, followed by Edward Evans.
Thank you, President Horstle, members of the board. Seamus Murphy with Samtrans. Just wanted to thank the county for the partnership that we've had over the last four years. The Measure K funding that's been provided to the Paratransit Program at Samtrans has really helped make sure that paratransit has not been reduced or cut back in San Mateo County. We've made service cuts in other areas of our bus service, of our rail service, our contributions to the Caltrain system. But our paratransit service has been preserved at the level that it currently operates. And we'd like to be able to continue to do that, especially because demand is really continuing to surge. We now serve over 1,200 riders every day through the program, over 330,000 trips a year. And that demand is increasing as the county ages. So it's very critical that we continue to provide these service levels. We, as you know, Samtrans has a structural deficit that we grapple with every year. We... The county funding has made sure that paratransit has been insulated from the efforts to resolve some of those budget challenges. We do have some prospects for new funding on the horizon. SB 1 is an opportunity for us to receive some formula money. Most of what is in SB 1 is capital funding that can't be used to support operations. The $44 million over 10 years is the result of the gas tax being indexed, so it increases over that 10-year timeframe. Unfortunately, in the near term, we only receive about $1.4 million in FY '18, about $2.2 million in FY '19. So the full impact of those formula contributions are not realized upfront. And it is the near-term impacts that we're conscious of in this circumstance. We are, as you know, looking at opportunities to generate new revenue through ballot measure options and other options that would be available to us, hopefully as early as 2018, 2019, through a measure that would be on the 2018 ballot. That's an opportunity for us to have the county phase out this contribution. But for the next couple of years, we do... We are asking that the county maintain the current $5 million contribution, to send a clear signal that the county wants an investment to be preserved in paratransit service, and that we shouldn't be reducing paratransit service because of the critical nature of those services to the customers that we have. Happy to be available for questions.
Okay, thanks, Seamus. Edward Evans, followed by Diane Bailey.
Good afternoon, President Horstle and board, gentlemen. I just came to speak on behalf of the county's union carpenters. That's who I represent. I'm a business agent at Local 217. I'm not here to tell you how to fix this budget or how to formulate it. That's not my area of expertise. But I know that you'll find a way, you'll hammer it out. What I am here to suggest is that, however this money is arrived at, however it's allocated, that when it is allocated to developers in the end, that we don't forget the working class of San Mateo County, the folks that are struggling to live here, that already do live here, the journeyman tradespeople, men and women, the apprentices, the young people who aren't going to college, who are coming into the trades to try to come into the middle class and stay here and live in San Mateo County. An excellent way to do that, if I may suggest, is to come up with a PLA, a county PLA for these funds. Obviously, prevailing wage is baked in the cake. It's already there. But something that kind of safeguards the money, to make sure that the money that the taxpayers have given to the county, that we've supported, is distributed fairly and paid out lawfully and democratically, truly democratically. Another thing, maybe this is just too simple, looking at all these numbers, is something to consider is that when you do that, when you pay the workers that live in your county... So the money comes in from the taxpayers, and then it goes out in the prevailing wages. And as long as it is paid properly to the workers, and they get all the money, and they do live in the community, it's going to backflow. It's going to come back to the county's businesses and also in taxes. So the money comes in, it goes out, and it comes back. It's sustainable. So that's all I'm here to just make that suggestion, that please remember the local workers and keep the chain of sustainability going. Thank you.
Diane Bailey, followed by Adina Levin.
Hello again, honorable supervisors. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm with Menlo Spark. We're a local community nonprofit aimed at a carbon-neutral Menlo Park in a sustainable region. I wanted to thank you for the county's support on affordable housing. This is a critical issue for sustainable communities that we strongly support. I'll be brief. Want to recommend that we not rob Peter to pay Paul, not rob very precious and critical transportation funding. As a gentleman from Samtrans pointed out, that the paratransit services that the county provides as the population ages is ever more important. And could we revisit this item? Could you hold off on approving this today to explore other funding options? Again, I want to emphasize that affordable housing is critical. We strongly support it, but not at the expense at very much-needed transit funding. Also want to point out, and I know Adina will go into greater detail on this, that we look at other county budget line items, such as a parking garage here at the county center, and sort of revisit, is that totally necessary? Could we look at some of the very innovative strategies that Stanford campus has used, for example, in supporting alternatives to driving? Perhaps the county could save millions of dollars and avoid the costs for a parking structure, looking at supporting those alternatives, not just for county employees, but for other folks downtown as well? I'm going to leave it there and let Adina chime in on that. And thank you for your very thoughtful consideration on this issue. Hope we can revisit it and hold off a vote today to preserve the much-needed Samtrans funding. Thank you.
Okay, Adina Levin, and followed by Julie Shanson.
Thank you very much, supervisors. Adina Levin, friends of Pelltrain. And I'd like to build on what Diane Bailey said in thanking the Board of Supervisors in listening to the voice of the community and wanting to increase the funding for affordable housing, but express concern that that not be done is a trade-off for paratransit and Samtrans funding, which is also supporting the lower-income members of our community who also depend on affordable housing. And would urge you to take another look at where to find the money to increase the housing. And as Ms. Bailey mentioned, it was really great to hear the Stanford gup and to hear about their really dramatic performance in reducing their drive alone rate over the last 10 years or so. And in terms of, there's a very significant, I believe, $40 million parking garage budget. The county does have a transportation demand management program, which my understanding is, has a 30% participation. I'm wondering whether... But that doesn't have, at least in the information I found, a mode share. So do we know that... Is that still 70% driving? Or is it, you know, what's that performance? Can there be transparent reporting on that? And then looking into, is the county doing all that it can to help employees who have the option? Not everyone will have that option. But to help employees who have options, use the options, drive less, and conserve some of the capital money for other purposes and potentially free up some money from the budget. So that is an area that I would encourage you to look closely at. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Shanson, followed by Evelyn Stivers.
Thank you. I'm Julie Shanson, and I live in Menlo Park. I'm part of a fledgling nonprofit called Bellhaven Action. We're looking to help folks in Bellhaven. We've noticed displacement in our community. And we've noticed that a lot of things haven't been fixed in the last 30 years. So as you look at this budget and you think about how time progresses, I would encourage you, as the previous speakers have said, to think about not robbing Peter to pay Paul and continuing the transportation allocation. But also, it seems to me that if we are building more affordable housing in the county with the same ongoing programs and staffing and the same tenant assistance programs, that might be a little short-sighted. Because if we're going to expand the pie, we're going to have to find ways to manage it. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final speaker is Evelyn Stivers. Oops, I... Looks like two more. Maybe three more.
Yes, when you thought you were done. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name's Evelyn Stivers. I'm the Executive Director of Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and their leaders to create and preserve quality affordable homes. I really appreciate the hard work that the Subcommittee did to try to come up with money. And I know budgets are always challenging. As a person that manages a nonprofit budget, when you have... When you try to come up with money, it has to come from somewhere. And I understand that you've made some really difficult trade-offs. I'm hoping that we can look a little deeper at some of the other options. I think there's some creative solutions that we might be able to find in the budget. And we would love to have more of a dialogue with you about some of the things that we've been thinking. So I was wondering if it would be possible for you not to make a decision today? And I know that that might sound counterintuitive since we asked you for the money, and now we're coming back and saying, but wait a second. I just think that there are some other possibilities that I would like to at least talk about. So thank you so much for your time and your dedication and the plan to move forward. Whatever the spending plan becomes, I hope it includes maximum flexibility so we can pick the best possible projects. Thank you.
Ally Stein, followed by Nevada Merriman.
Good afternoon, supervisors. I'm Ally Stein. I'm a project manager with Bridge Housing Corporation. We commend the supervisors and staff for working so quickly and diligently to examine how to increase the allocation of Measure K funding to affordable housing. And we support the increased funding level at $25 million per year. As you know, the local funding that Affordable Housing Developments receive vastly leverage other non-county funding sources for affordable housing. We appreciate the time and thought that has already been dedicated to these difficult budget decisions. However, we would like to ask that the supervisors continue the vote on the allocation and additional time in order to continue to review the total Measure K allocations and be sure to examine all possible sources for the increased allocation to affordable housing. We truly appreciate the attention to increasing funding for affordable housing and are counting on these funds in order to develop current pipeline projects and future projects in San Mateo. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ally. Nevada Merriman, followed by Michael Martin Fox.
Good afternoon, supervisors. I'm Nevada Merriman, Director of Housing Development for MidPenn and resident of Menlo Park. I've been jotting down notes because there's, quite frankly, a lot to respond to in this discussion, and two minutes is going to be tough. So in many cases, I do support extra time to make some of these decisions because I think that there's a lot of nuance that's being missed. And that's not for any sort of intent on the housing staff or the various presentations that've been made. It's just that many of these topics are complicated. Now, I'll try to go through just a couple of my impressions here. First, I want to mention that Diane Bailey and Adina Levin's former testimony, I think that really captures part of the zeitgeist here, that as the discussion... If the discussion of priorities is being framed as this, I think it's really... You're in a tough position to make this decision. But really, that there are larger... There is a larger budget frame that you could consider. And I would ask you to think about that. The... Some of the other points that I'll just sit on briefly. In terms of the moderate... The Preservation Program being something that is not... Requires more money from the county. We do realize that those aren't the most efficient units to deliver. But in addition to being fast, which President Horstle accurately stated, they also often are unrestricted. So they are able to serve this missing middle, this moderate income, this kind of middle-class, this mythical middle-class of San Mateo that is so desperately trying to stay here. And so we do realize that that might not be, in some cases, the best bang for the buck. But that's a... It can be, in some cases, an anti-displacement strategy. And there are some advantages to it that... And that point hasn't been really hit upon today. I share Supervisor Pine's reservation on trying to avoid the silos of funds. Our pipeline is much greater than what has been characterized here today. And then lastly, I have the same sort of response to seeing HART as being an additional siloed fund there as the Silicon Valley Housing Trust funds are sometimes a lot more responsive to the business needs that we have at MidPenn. And so it's maybe an opportunity to shine a light on some of those programs and try to see, if they are going to get such a large allocation, maybe there's some room for innovation there, since we surely do like to work with them. I know my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Martin Fox?
Thank you again, President Horstle and Supervisor Slokman, members of the board. I understand, these are tough calls. And I appreciate the fact that you've included unfunded initiatives that address jail mental health issues like the ones that we heard at the March 28 meeting, precisely because it deals with the seriously mentally ill who are in our custody now as the result of the Michael Tyree death down in Santa Clara County. And so I'm asking you, if you're going to vote today, vote for Option Two, because it recognizes that. However, I also need to point out to you what Mr. Byers pointed out to you at the March 28 meeting. And that is, we have not been the subject of jail inmate lawsuits over mental health services and deferring addressing that issue when we've already had over a year of stretching our facilities and our staff, I think is a material risk that you need to have some concept of the effect of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Just to make one quick comment, is that on Measure... I think one of the things that Measure K was, it wasn't new money, it was simply an extension of Measure A. So there really isn't any new money. So, you know, the board... What we're trying to do is that because of requests to come up with more money for housing, that's why we ended up trying to get as close as we could to a larger number. You could always go back to the original allocation of $15 million. But any decision you make has to be... There are difficult decisions to be made, so...
Could I ask... I made a question to the Subcommittee or our staff. I know at the last meeting, in particular, Supervisor Slokman will remember this, we had a lot of discussion about the $65 million IT budget, which is non-Measure A. And I remember Supervisor Slokman, you and I both expressed some interest in seeing how those would be prioritized. When I mentioned that, my... You know, because the only IT subject to reduction in this proposal is the Measure K IT. So I'm just trying to understand whether we need to look at that $65 million or whether... You know, why we're only looking at the Measure K IT?
Just to remind, the board of that $65 million, $40 million was funded by the departments themselves. So that was not new money.
So that was not new money. That was existing money. And we were coming back with a priority in the budget, but those are all, for a large part, ongoing projects or major projects that simply have to be undertaken since the systems have reached the end of their useful life.
Other comments?
Just to finish up on that, I mean, I still think it'd be worthwhile to come back and look at the 130 million of IT spending. You know, we did 65 million in the prior year and we're allocating 65 million. This is without Measure K. Given the size of that, I do think that it would be helpful for the Board to better understand that overall expenditure. Because you know, the, I think one thing that the commentators are mentioning, which I think is worth our consideration, you know, if we just look within the Measure K budget, this is a pretty difficult task. But if you look, for example, at the set aside, we have a set aside of $5 million, which is backfill for state and federal impacts. So that's money that we're not spending. We're setting it aside. So a couple of thoughts about that. Now, one is, do we need to have that set aside? Because we have set aside 8 million already in Measure A. Secondly, yes, the Measure A has a reserve fund of 8 million before this 10 is added on to it. Right. So that's, you know, that's a, you know, I could get comfortable, I think, just saying the 8 million is enough of a reserve for me. But if people want another $10 million in reserve, then you could get that from anywhere. You could get that anywhere in the budget. I mean, again, you could find $10 million of reductions anywhere in the general fund and add that to the reserve. I mean, we're really, this, by putting this aside like this, it makes it pretty impossible. It makes it really hard to increase, to make changes within the pie that's not increasing. So, you know, maybe we should talk about that for a little minute, for a little bit is, you know, do my colleagues feel that we need $18 million of Measure AK reserve? I guess that's the first question. Because you know, there's 10 million extra if you leave it at eight. I mean, I ask for your input.
Yeah, well, let me do, I made one mistake. I actually threw one of these speaker cards away inadvertently before I should. I should have had one more. There is one more public speaker and I would get to that and we can go back on to the issue about reserves. Hannah Beckman?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to add, thank you for taking the time to consider increasing affordable housing and your thoughtful discussion. As a young person who works in Brisbane, as a former kindergarten teacher in San Jose, I'm very excited by the opportunities here for jobs, but it is very hard to live here. I want to live close to where I work and I ask that you take a hard look at the budget and study it as you're doing now. Ask you to consider people like me who don't own a home and who want to have an affordable place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor, just to finish my point. So for example, if you freed up that 5 million, everyone, you know, it feels like free money. Of course it isn't. But you could then take the SAM Trans back to five, that's 1.25. You could take the IT back up to five, that's 1.25. And you could bring affordable housing up to the full 25 million. This is option two. And then, so that's how you could allocate it. So the only person that would take the hit is the good five of us in the district-specific funds where we would go down to one.
That's okay with me.
Then in the second year, if you allocated the five, and there could be different views on this, you could give 2.5 to IT again. I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest in these IT broadband projects. Then the other two five, I mean, I'm very hopeful that, I think it's a necessity that we pass a transportation tax in November of 18. If that doesn't happen, SAM Trans and Caltrain are going to be in a hole so deep that the county is not going to be able to bail them out. So the 2.5 may be enough for SAM Trans that year on the theory that they pass their tax. All right? So in other words, with the five in the fiscal year 19, you bring IT back up to five, you bring different district-specific funding back to the 3.5. So in other words, so 10 million is an easy way to fix this problem, but you have to be comfortable living with an $8 million reserve instead of an $18 million reserve. Now, in that $18 million reserve, you know, I'm hopeful that by the time we get to September, that is always is the case, we usually have, the books usually come out better than we think. So that's one upside. A second upside that I've been talking to Peninsula Clean Energy about is, Peninsula Clean Energy, the Board, the county was generous in loaning $3 million to Peninsula Clean Energy. We may be in a position to pay that back early, so that could.
What was six?
Well, it's three plus a $5 million collateralization. So there's a pure three. And so there, you know, if there's, you know, if we really feel we have a reserve problem, there may be other avenues to attack that. So, I guess that would be my proposal, is that we live with an $8 million reserve and go from there.
Supervisor Canepa?
Thank you very much. President, through the County Manager, I'm interested in SAM Trans. If you can provide some background to SAM Trans and the funding that they receive and just the historical background on that.
Through the President, Supervisor Canepa, when SAM Trans, when Measure A was passed and SAM Trans began experiencing its deficits, there was discussion at the Board level of helping them out on an interim basis to help them stabilize their budget. That was four years ago. The funds, although in some part allocated to paratransit, were really to help them with their budget deficit. It appears, even from what Mr. Murphy said today, that next year, they're going to be getting a million, two million and a half more money than they had otherwise anticipated the year after that too, so on and so forth. So in addition to whatever we're helping with, the state's helping with their budget deficit, at some point, I think it's not unreasonable for the Board to say that as a separate budget, a separate government agency, you know, they need to balance their budget and be self-sustaining like any city would, or any school district would, or any special district would. If the Board really wants to get in the business of helping solve structural deficits among local governments, I suspect that's going to be a very big business to get into.
Second question to Mr. Malpe. Mr. Malpe, tell me a little bit about how the district funds have been used within the districts. What are some of the programs that have been put together by the various Supervisors? If you can just.
Through, again, the President, Supervisor Canepa, the attachment we added to this item listed all of the district-specific funding and how they've been used in the last two years. So that gives you an idea if you want to weigh the relative merits of how funding was used in the districts versus housing or some other transportation or some other priority, you could individually weigh those in your own mind.
The reason I weigh that, weighing that in my mind, and thank you, Mr. Malpe, for explaining that, are a couple of things. One, I've seen in my particular district, and I wasn't the Supervisor, it was Supervisor Tissier, the impacts of those funds in our community. An example of that you can see is with the Daly City Youth Health Center and them having a facility to operate for the youth in our community. I'll tell you, at this particular time, in regards to what Mr. Pine said, I'm a little bit reluctant, or I'm a lot reluctant in terms of, you know, our Board District, Board District-specific funds not being allocated. I have a deep concern around that, colleagues, and I just thought I'd laid that out there.
Thank you.
Group?
Thank you. I'm willing to explore Supervisor Pine's idea and see what it looks like when it's put back on a piece of paper. I want to go back to the necessity of paratransit funds. I don't view it as giving SAM Trans extra money to balance their budget. I view it as money to serve, that takes care of people who are most vulnerable. We talk about the vulnerable people who can't afford a roof over their head or who can't even have an apartment to share. And this is certainly the people, for the most part, who are eligible to take SAM Trans. They live, in some cases, on Section 8 housing. In some cases, they live in a one-room part of another house. They have a lot of medical needs. A big majority of the people who are on, who take Ready Wheels are going for renal dialysis a couple of days a week. They have severe health problems. They have no ability to work any longer due to their health problems. And it's, and many of the people who use the paratransit in our county are county clients. They're taking paratransit to come to county clinics. They're taking paratransit to come to HSA for services. So I don't view it as a SAM Trans balance the budget. I view it as serving the most vulnerable population in our county and helping them get out of their house, for the most part, going to medical appointments. And I don't think a couple extra million is the wrong way to spend that money. Thanks, Mr. President.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I was a member of the Subcommittee and I thought.
Appointed by me.
Yeah, thank you. Hopefully that, you know, the work that we did was going to stand here today. But I've been swayed by the comments of some of the folks and maybe the way forward for us to consider is to take them up on their suggestion of meeting with them and having some kind of a conversation. I'm not opposed to Supervisor Pine's, Supervisor Pine's 8 million, although I think it's, I'm not sure about it if that's the right way to go. But, and I know this is going to be heresy, and I'm sorry for it, but the parking garage that we're contemplating building, I just would, if we have a chance, I would personally like to revisit that in light of what Stanford was talking about this morning and some of those initiatives. I don't know where that would lead, but just the notion of the parking garages, I forgot the number, 40 million?
It was in that neighborhood. Just to be clear, there was no Measure K money in the parking garage.
I'm with you. Thank you. But it's just the notion of building another parking garage, and I know Redwood City is supposed to be talking about leasing part of it, but it just, if we could, I don't know, look at that just as a policy question. But I'm not adverse to continuing this conversation with some of the advocates and it doesn't necessarily have to be this Subcommittee, it could be a new Subcommittee, whatever the Board prefers. But I just, I'm not comfortable making all these decisions just on the fly. I'd rather be more thoughtful about it. So thank you, Mr. President.
You know, I think that's a good suggestion. I think we should go back and take a look at this once again, especially specifically about our potential of reserves. So we'll put this off until perhaps the next Board meeting?
May 16.
May 16, okay.
And again, if I may add on the reserves, again, you know, if, and I'm sure the County Manager would like to see the 18 million reserve as opposed to just the eight, right? Maybe you might want to speak to that for a minute.
Sure, you know, obviously, just in my own mind and in the discussion we've had with the Board, we have at least an unfunded $40 million property tax system that all the property taxing agencies in the county, school districts, special districts, cities, the county depend on, that has to be funded. And that's probably going to be, you know, it's a multi-year project, but it's at least $10 million a year. I've just got the recent numbers on the correctional health upgrade facilities, that's 8.5 million dollars a year. The green initiative from the Regional Water Quality Control Board is 4.5 million dollars a year. So when you're thinking about reserves, those get spent pretty fast when you're looking at some of the projects that we're looking at. And so I get nervous when we make a decision to take money from the reserves because that's money that's not replaced easily. And if I could just add one other point to the discussion, I'm somewhat surprised that the discussion of housing always centers around the county. 90% of the housing in this county takes place in cities. There's no discussion about how the cities are going to match this money or what contributions the cities are going to make toward affordable housing. And so it really places the burden on one government and one government alone to deal with what is really a county-wide problem.
I might also add that 90% of the residents live in the cities and I, you know, are we the only agency that has to help SAM Trans? It seems to me that perhaps the cities ought to step up as well.
Did they make a comment?
Go ahead.
I've thought a lot about your comment about, you know, what is the county's obligation? I was actually somewhat surprised at the last meeting that when we, particularly on the affordable housing that has been built, you know, remember those charts and it showed where each of the slices came from? The cities were actually pretty much equal to us on at least on that portion of the construction.
And that money came from two or three cities?
Probably true. But those two or three cities have certainly contributed. And then, you know, we do, I do think we have a unique obligation because of the way we campaigned on Measure K. I went back and I got all the flyers. And, you know, here's one, you know, talking about my rent increase. And then, you know, the tagline was affordability and quality of life without increasing taxes. You know, the literature is choke-full of our commitment to affordable housing, tackling housing affordability without new taxes. We really did emphasize this. So, I mean, that is a difference. I mean, in my mind, that's a difference. And then on the reserves, I guess, I'm just wondering whether we're double counting the reserves with Measure AK because overall, we have, what, a 10% reserve, right? So, but in the Measure K stake, we've got the 10%, but then we're adding, in the 8 million, but then we're adding another 10 million on top of it.
The difference in my mind are the two specific purposes that those reserves have been set aside for. We already know that the Federal Aviation Administration has ruled that a portion of the Measure K taxes are to be spent only at airports. We're challenging that ruling, but should we lose, and nobody has successfully challenged it yet, that money's going to have to come right off the top and it's ongoing money. It's not one-time money, it's ongoing money.
That one's not part of my proposal.
Okay. And with respect to the 5 million that we talk about for Affordable Care Act, you could cut it to zero, but I have no way of knowing, and I don't think any Board member has any way of knowing, what's going to happen to the Affordable Care Act. And housing is important, but let me tell you that the people that go to San Mateo County Medical Center absolutely have no other choice. We absolutely have to keep it open. We absolutely have to fund those programs and it would be criminal not to.
And I couldn't agree more. It's just that we have a 10% reserve of 300 million for that purpose. And to add an extra, you know, we're double counting the reserve, I believe, here.
Well, let me, Supervisor Pine, just, it's late in the day and been at this for some time. And, you know, I do respect what you have in saying. So I'm going to change our Subcommittee to be you and I to meet with the County Manager. We can also meet with the housing folks as well. And we can take a look at the reserves and come back with some additional recommendations at a later point. And gracious of Supervisor Slocum to allow somebody else to take his position on the Subcommittee. So we'll come back to the Board with the different recommendations in May. Okay, so I'll go on to County Manager's report. I suspect you will have us just read it.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, Mr.
Thank you very much. And Board members' reports. Do you have any reports down at Supervisor Group, Supervisor Slocum?
I have one adjourned in memory, if I could. You'll all remember that there was a fire in North Fair Oaks a month ago. It was a fire in a motorhome that was parked in a driveway and a person died in that fire. The person, his name was Rolando Garza. And I would like to have us adjourn in his memory today. He was a resident of North Fair Oaks, lived in his RV. He was born and raised in San Jose, attended local schools, his family told us. He worked for an area closet company for several years and worked at assorted labor jobs before eventually landing a job in an auto body shop as a detailer. And the family members remember Rolando as a caring individual who would bring dinner to his father's home once a week after finishing a long day at the auto body shop in Redwood City. He was an Oakland Raiders fan. He loved listening to music and doing hand-drawn sketches. He was an artist of sorts. Anyway, Mr. Garza died in that RV fire in North Fair Oaks and, as I mentioned, would like to adjourn in his memory today.
Supervisor Pine?
I wanted to let everyone know that we had a stunning, successful CDA cares event at the San Mateo County Event Center over the weekend where over 2,000 people received free dental care. And that was supported. And that was supported by the, by the county and the County Manager's office and Anne Marie Filvestri and Michael Barber, my office. And it was really an extraordinary thing to see with the event center full of dental chairs and people getting free service.
Right. Supervisor Canepa, okay, we now adjourn to closed session?
And by the way, I will have no report out of closed session today, so there's no need to come back after closed session.
Good, because we're not.